Okay. We'll call this meeting. Ready to go. The City Glenwood Springs Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting. March twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty four. And this meeting is held in person and via Zoom. The the number for Zoom for for calling is one seven one nine three five nine four five eight zero. Passcode one seven seven three six six. Webinar ID eight nine zero three three six two eight one one five. Okay, let's start with the roll call, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and public alike.
Good afternoon.
Commissioner Hutton.
Present.
Commissioner Connerton.
Present.
Commissioner Sipperly.
Here.
Chairman Weller.
Here.
Commissioner Cullen.
Here.
Commissioner Sims.
Here.
All right, we have a call to begin.
Okay. Okay, I'll I'll call for a motion for the receipt of the minutes from the February twenty seventh. Two thousand and twenty four meeting. And I'll ask, are there any conflicts of interest? That was, I mean that. Okay.
I move to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Any any comments or additions or deletions? Okay, we'll just do a a voice vote. I was not at the meeting, so I will abstain, but all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are accepted. Okay, are there any comments from citizens appearing for items not on the agenda? Okay, I see none. We'll move on to new items. The first item is Planning File oh six dash twenty four Code Text Amendment. Short for short term rentals and accessory tourist rental permits. And I think Emery. Is on.
Hello, so this is Emery Ellingson, Community Development, presenting a planning file zero six twenty four, and I will be sharing my screen. Okay, so tonight Planning and Zoning Commission will be considering a Code Text Amendment to Section seventy thirty thirty, specifically short term rental and accessory tourist rental permits. So again, this would apply citywide, and the role of Planning and Zoning Commission here is to recommend recommend approval. You Planning and Zoning Commission is not the deciding body on Code Text Amendments. And so any recommendation that you would make, whether that be for approval or denial, would then go to City Council for final review. So I'll just. Again, so here are the criteria I'll go into later at the end of the presentation. Staff's recommendations for each of these criteria. And then so just a little overview about vacation rentals. So the city has regulated vacation rentals in some form since approximately two thousand and twelve. The reason this Code Text Amendments are before you today is City Council held a work session in February discussing review of the current program. And so all the amendments that we're talking about tonight are based on both feedback from council and then also staff observations from the program. The most recent significant change to regulations occurred in two thousand and nineteen. At that time, City Council modified the regulations and put in requirements for building inspections, added a distance requirement that there's a certain amount of distance, which is two hundred and fifty feet, that new permits have to be apart from each other, and then also increased fees. So currently, there are two types of permits. There is the short term rental permit, a lot of times we call that STR, and that's the rental of an entire dwelling for a period of less than thirty days. If you are renting for more than thirty days, that's considered a long term rental. No permit would be required for that, but you know, terms of the lease are set between landlord and tenant. So again, thirty days and less is the cutoff. Any new short term rental permit has to be located two hundred and fifty feet away from any existing permits. With the exception of being in the GID, and so that's that's one type of permit that the city has, and that's the majority of vacation rentals that are permitted in the City Glenwood Springs are of that type. And then there's a second type called the accessory tourist rental, also known as ATR, and that's limited to one bedroom. Either the property owner or man or a property manager has to be onsite living there. There's no distance requirements, and it is limited to a minimum of two persons. I should say two people. All short term rentals collect tax. They collect both sales tax and accommodations tax. Five percent accommodations tax of that two point five percent goes to two C funding for workforce housing, and that was approved with a ballot issue in November two thousand and twenty two. And then again, the fees, which they were increased by City Council in two thousand and twenty three. They are six hundred dollars for the first permit period and then four hundred for each renewal for short term rental permits, and then accessory tourist rental permits, they are at a lower price. Permit periods run for two year periods, so the current one is two thousand and twenty four to two thousand and twenty five. And so this table you see here just illustrates. So again, in two thousand and nineteen was when new regulations were instituted, and then you can see every permit period from there, you can see the number of permits has decreased immediately decreased and then has fluctuated. And I should also mention too that short term rental permits do not transfer with the sale of a home. So if you see where two thousand and twenty three, there was a hundred and forty, now there's a hundred and thirty one. There was a number of home sales that occurred where permits were removed from the list. So again, today, the code amendments that we'll be discussing are changes to the buffer size, the total cap, so total limit of permits, application timelines, penalties and violations, and ownership models. And so these are things that were identified in the City Council work session, and then also things that staff has observed. I would say, you know, this isn't totally inclusive of everything that we can talk about, but if we Planning and Zoning Commission is going to make any additional recommendations, they are going to need to be specific and something that council can, you know, very concrete thing that they can consider. If it's not, you know, one of the ones that are already being proposed. So first, the buffer regulations. So this is a map, and this is available on the city website. The yellow dot show permits, and so that buffer goes two hundred and fifty feet out from the proximate lines. And so if you're any other property that's a hundred percent covered in green, it's not eligible for a short term rental permit. Now, if it's partially covered, so if I can move my cursor, like say this property right here, that property would be eligible to apply for a short term rental permit. And again, this regulation doesn't apply to the accessory tourist rental permits where you only rent one bedroom. This is for the one where you'd rent the whole house. And so this is what two hundred and fifty feet looks like as it is now. Staff has proposed an increase to three hundred feet, and so the image below shows, okay, so green is your current two hundred and fifty feet. And then the red, orange, that would be what a buffer would look like at three hundred feet. And another aspect too is for most other public notices, the distance required to send out public notice is three hundred feet. And sending out a public notice is part of the short term rental permit process, so that is partly why three hundred was picked to be the increase, just to have that align for public noticing. And again, that's can be subject to further discussion, but that's what staff's recommendation was at this time. So that covers the buffer part of it, and this would be the actual Code Text that would be changed. Just changing the references to two hundred and fifty feet to three hundred. So the second aspect of some of the changes being proposed are the permit caps. And so there is a maximum number of permits that are allowed in the city. And so I'll break some of this down. So citywide, right now, there could be two hundred and ten total permits. Right now, the way these are counted, there are ninety six, so it's about fifty percent capacity. There is a difference difference between permits that are within what's called the GID, General Improvement District, and permits that are outside of it. And so this next map, this is the General Improvement District. It is a special tax district in the downtown area, so that's its main function. But it is used as a geographic area for some code requirements. So essentially, any short term rental permit in the General Improvement District, it's not counted towards the total cap. So you can see on this page, just this ninety six, we don't count the twenty five that exist in the GID towards the total right now. And then also within the GID, they aren't subject to the two hundred and fifty foot rule. So I think I have a series of maps. Okay. So this just, these are different parts of town, and this is included in the staff report. And so you can see how that buffer plays out and how it, you know, each permit, two hundred and fifty feet. And then if you're outside of it, you know, that property would be eligible for a short term rental permit. And so this is West Glenwood. And then you can also notice too, the size of a property plays a role in how big that buffer is. So you can see there's some larger properties that have sizable buffers. And then the blue dots are the accessory tourist rentals, and they don't have that buffer. So again, in the downtown area, you can see where all the green is carved out. That's because that's the GID. So none of those permits within that are counted towards the total. And then you probably noticed too, in some areas, especially in the downtown, there are instances where permits are closer than two hundred and fifty feet. And that's because when the rule was added in two thousand and nineteen, any existing permits were allowed to continue as long as they remain in good standing. So there are situations though where you know, you could have an existing permit, the house sells, that person, that permit goes away, and the new owner would not be able to reapply because they're too close. So that you can see where that layout downtown and kind of the Midland area going down Grand and then South Glenwood. So again, staff recommendation here is to actually, if we go back to this table, this staff recommendation for the permit cap is to count permits within the GID towards the citywide total. And so that would bring it up to instead of ninety six permits citywide, it'd be at one twenty one. So essentially, just count all the permits the same way is what this recommendation here is covering. And so that's again, so that's the total amount that are allowed. And the way that total amount is calculated is based on a percentage of free market units in town. And so right now, there are four thousand two hundred and eleven free market units, and it's set at five percent. So that's where we get our two hundred and ten cap from. And so City Council discussed also adjusting this, and so you can see if it was at four percent, how many permits would be allowed, if it was at three and down to two. And then I also showed, so within the GID, it's eighteen percent of the amount of free market units. And so it showed, you know, if that percentage were changed. I mean, another thing too to keep in mind is that as number, as units are added to the city, this four thousand two hundred and eleven would change, and it would increase where the five percent, you know, that calculation that stays the same, but it would, you know, any growth in the permit cap would correspond to citywide growth. So staff doesn't recommend modifying the cap percentage at this time. If any changes were recommended, staff would recommend not going beneath four percent. And the reason for that is if you see like three percent, that's pretty close to the number of existing permits, so you know, lowering the cap could kind of make a run on permits. So again, staff doesn't recommend a change to five percent or the eighteen percent at this time. Another aspect of applications is timelines. So currently, code doesn't specify timeline or how long it takes someone to complete a permit. And the full process is submit a permit application, now which includes a business license and the application fee. You schedule and pass the building inspection, and you complete a public notice. And there's no timeline specified in code for when all that happens. Some people are very motivated. They compete completed in two to three weeks. Other people, it may take them more time. Another instance too is with passing a building inspection. Some people fail their building inspection. They have to take out, for example, like a permit to fix windows. And then the short term rental permit will get basically put on a building permit timeline, which can potentially take a while. And so staff, I think it would be staff recognize that this can be an issue, and we haven't had a lot of issues with the dragging out. But having that potential, I think it would be good for there to be a specific timeline specified in code. And so six, it could be six months, nine months, a year. These are different timelines that staff has suggested. And if we can further discuss that too, that this is something that staff identifies as needed is a specific timeline. The length that can be subject to more discussion. And then also to code doesn't prohibit a property owner from applying for a permit concurrently with a building permit. So if you had a vacant house, and you wanted to submit a building permit to build a house and a short term rental permit, there's nothing in code that prevents that. And so staff suggests that a property owner is required to obtain a certificate of occupancy, so finish a house before that can apply for a short term rental permit. Now, this section, penalties and violations. So there are sections of code that deal with, and I would say fortunately, we have not had to utilize this section a lot as far as penalties and violations for short term rentals. However, these sections are, they're they're not specific to the property owner. So suggested changes are to tie more of the actions of guests and what happens on the property to the property owner. Because typically, when there are issues with the property, it's police officers or code enforcement that arrive, and they're interacting with guests. And so maybe if a ticket is written, it goes to the guest for like a noise complaint, and that's very difficult the way code now is now to tie that back to the property owner for any sorts of penalties or violations for not managing short term rental. So this is the current code language suggested for the changes. And I think a lot of this probably when it goes to City Council would work with legal department to get this specific and make sure it works on for our purposes, because this also involves coordinating with code enforcement and police department and how they operate, how they write tickets. But the purpose of this is just recognizing there are some gaps that could lead to property owners not necessarily or permit holders not necessarily having to be responsible for what happens on their property. And finally, so this one, ownership models. This is something that staff has recognized as sort of an increased pattern. There are some other communities in Colorado which have also addressed it. And so as I mentioned before, a permit does does not transfer with the sale of a home. Now, when there is an individual who sells a home to another individual, it's pretty transparent, it's pretty clear who the property is transferring to. When other ownership models, group ownership models like LLCs, trusts, and just maybe fractional ownership, it becomes a little less clear immediately. And so, for example, Crested Butte requires a natural person to apply for the license and be the license holder, and that person has to hold at least a fifteen percent stake in that ownership model. Buena Vista does it a little differently. They actually take their permits, and they have resident category and a nonresident category, and they automatically consider any permit held by an LLC or trust to just be a nonresident and go in kind of that bucket. As far as the way that the permits break down currently in Glenwood, there are twenty three properties that hold a permit that are owned by an LLC and nine that are owned by a trust. And so in total, it's twenty six of those total permits. And that's a mix, you know, again, it's it's a vehicle for a business, and short term rental is a business. But one of the concerns of City Council is just the idea that, you know, you can have maybe an out of out of town, out of state business group be competing for basically single family homes, which is, that's usually the type of house that someone wants for short term rental. And so that was the concern is just looking at ways to regulate this type of ownership, because currently don't really have specific language as far as when someone applies. If they come in and they're in LLC, okay, written down as an LLC, have a signature of one of the persons that's with that group. Right now, there's not, you know, requirements for how much ownership that person has or how that transfers. And so again, so here's here's some suggestions for possible changes. One, any permit held for a property owned by a trust or LLC has to designate a natural person. So that will be the person submitting the application, signing the application, being the contact person on the application. And if that person no longer holds an interest in that ownership group, that constitutes a transfer of ownership. And then again, so that person, that natural person would have to have at least a thirty three percent ownership. And that that number was selected with the idea that, okay, you might have maybe you know, a pair of spouses, that's fifty fifty. And this would be kind of accommodating one extra person. And like I said, with Crested Butte, they had theirs at fifteen, so that's again a number that could be discussed further. Natural person holding the permit must be eighteen years of age or older. The idea of that is, you know, having a group ownership model and saying, okay, this five year old is going to be the natural person who is the permit holder, and that kind of gets around having to transfer a permit. And then again, at time of permit application, and each renewal, the natural person permit holder would be required to provide the current ownership percentages. So again, renewals happen every two years. So if there's any changes in the ownership group, that person that holds the permit still needs to be there, have you know, thirty three percent, forty percent, whatever that percentage is set of the ownership. And and again, this is, I do not have specific code language. This is something again that we're going to need to work with legal department just to make sure all the language works out, and the exact language would go to City Council. But again, if Planning and Zoning Commission has additional ideas on on this aspect of it, that's would be part of the discussion tonight. So as far as criteria, there are five criteria for a code amendment change. One is proposed amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan and other city policies. And so there is a goal in the comprehensive plan, which is specifically review short term rental policy to determine impact in the local housing market. And so that's an aspect of these code changes is striking the balance between, you know, it is something that allows people to use the properties, and it also does have community impacts, especially in the local housing market. Two, the proposed amendment does not conflict with other provisions of the code. Does not conflict with other provisions of the code. The proposed amendment is necessary to address a demonstrated community need. So again, these these amendments have come from, you know, City Council identifying issues that are important to them, and then also just staff observations of what difficulties there have been. Kind of where the marketplace of short term rentals is going. And again, just kind of striking the balance between benefits and impacts of short term rentals in the community. And proposed amendment is necessary to respond to substantial changes in conditions and our policy. So again, these are just observations staff has made. You can see other communities in Colorado starting to see more of the group ownership models. And then also, just like I said, with the timeline for application timelines, just ways of making tweaks to make a better program. And then again, five, the proposed amendment is consistent with general purpose and intent of the code, which it is. And so again, no public comment was submitted, formally submitted at the time of the staff report. There may be members of the public here tonight that would like to speak on the item when that time comes. And then again, so there's really one action item. It's consider consideration of these code amendments. And then I would say too, on the ones where there's not specific code language for, I mean, staff has set out what those recommendations to council would be, and you know, those would get represented in the exact legal language that goes to council. So again, it's approval, and then some of those are more specific. So the ones that are in text with language that struck out and replaced, that's what that would look, that's a very specific change, and that's what you would be approving for or recommending for City Council to approve. So again, that's. Yeah, I don't.
Okay, thank you very much, Emery. Okay, let's open it up for questions from Commission for for Emery. Commissioner Sims?
Yeah, Emery, what define a free market unit?
So anything that is not deed restricted, so these free market can be bought and sold. So new projects now, anything above ten units has to have deed restricted units, where they're either restricted by rental or purchase price, or like resident occupied, that person that lives there has to be in Glenwood Springs. So that number, so there's a total number for the state of Colorado has for City Glenwood Springs, and we subtract all the ones that are de-restricted.
Fair enough. The, why did we staff go with suggestion of for the ownership models, more Crested Butte versus what BV has?
So I'll go to that slide. So the main reason for that is switching to categories of resident and nonresident. That's not how the licenses are issued now. So that would be a bigger, kind of a bigger question and reworking of the entire short term rental permit program. Where Crested Butte, that that model just lined up more, like when you compare how they regulate theirs, well, it's not entirely true. Every community does it very, very differently.
Sure, I understand that, yeah.
Like some communities will involve like what zone is it in, what zoning district, which isn't like an aspect of our program.
Okay. All right, fair enough.
Yeah.
What is, so going back to the comprehensive plan, has council or somebody made some sort of determination that short term housing rentals have had an adverse impact upon the community? I mean, I've what I see was that the number of units are declining. The two hundred and fifty foot barrier seems to encompass a massive amount of the platted town. What seems to be the impact and why is count, why is City Council wanting to make these amendments? I can understand wanting to streamline and make things a little more simplified. I don't understand some of the stuff that's being presented to us today as to why we're looking at making some of these changes.
Sure, and I mean, I'm not going to speak for all seven members of council, and they were, you know, some members of council feel that we have that there's enough, there's enough short term rentals. They're very adamant of let's take the cap, let's lower it. There's, we have enough. That's that's their opinion of that's the balance. We're at it. Where others were not there.
This is, these are feelings. Is there a study? Is there anything to help us support an adverse impact?
I'll go ahead and jump in and help Emery out on this one. The recently adopted Strategic Housing Action Plan is the most recent study showcasing impacts from short term rentals on housing stocks. Council adopted that back in January, I believe. Also, a regional housing study that was done in two thousand and nineteen and subsequent updates for for COVID trends also illustrate some negative impacts when it comes to housing stock changes when short term rental permits are allowed to proliferate. So council agreed with that with those studies and the information presented from those consultants. Those studies were both grant funded as well.
Do we know when, what's the dates of those studies and when was that data compiled?
The regional housing study was completed from two thousand and seventeen to two thousand and nineteen.
Okay.
The COVID trends update to that. The covid trends update to that. Was twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two. And most recently, the Strategic Housing Action Plan was twenty twenty-two to the end of twenty twenty-three.
I have more, but I'll get to them.
Thank you, thank you, Emery. Uh two questions. Um is there a gauge for how many potentially qualifying properties would be? Removed from consideration of, you know, able to apply for a permit with this buffer change?
Yeah, so if it went to three hundred, um and I did this today, and so it's not in the staff report. Uh it would make ineligible five hundred and one properties. Um now with that, it is important to remember that like a condo is a property. Uh so there are areas in town where one permit. Can make twenty or thirty properties ineligible, you know, where it depends it isn't down, but five hundred and one.
Okay, thank you. And the second is um use criteria. If I have a permit, am I required to demonstrate use over that that one year period?
Correct, yeah. Um so in the two-year permit period.
Two years, thank you.
The, in order to renew, to be eligible to renew, at some point in that two-year permit period, you will have. To submit at least some amount of lodging tax. No minimum is set. Again, people can use the properties, you know, as they wish. Some people do it. Maybe rent it a couple of weekends a year. Some people use it exclusively. So. That is currently how code requires for renewal. And the purpose, that's the purpose of having the business license, is submitting the accommodation tax.
Okay, thank you.
John?
Uh thank you, Emery. Once you have a a short-term rental permit, do you have that in perpetuity as long as you're? In good standing and as you just said. Submitting some lodging tax in a two-year period?
Correct, yeah. So it, so you get a permit, you have one, um you submit lodging tax in the two-year period. You, so each renewal period, you have to have another building inspection, renew your business license. But yeah, as long as you're remaining good standing, you're still the owner of the property. It would just, you just keep going with it.
So it's not like every two years, there's a mad scramble to pick up.
No.
Permit, so. Three hundred foot buffer, I assume would create a a number of existing non-conforming permits?
Correct, yeah, probably would result in addition. Well, I mean, get to look at the map and see, but I would imagine that there would be some properties. That with the three hundred. You know, going forward. But again, I I think a point to that, it's always dynamic. Properties are always being bought and sold. Downtown looks very covered, but at times when the property sells. It pulls out and maybe there's a certain property somewhere else that becomes available. Well, sorry, what's your initial question?
It it would just potentially create more existing non-conforming licenses. Okay, thank you.
I think the point is, is it so variables, like yes, you know, that buffer would go out, but then maybe this one goes. And again, not having it transferred with the sale of a home. Does cause for some turnover inevitably.
You got anything else? Commissioner Conerton?
I, hey, thanks, Emery. I just have a couple of questions as well. Um so some communities, um they actually don't say trust. Or LLC, they just say trust. Is there, um I I know this is old language. Is there a reason why you guys didn't um just think about keeping it in like a trust? For somebody who's applying for permit?
I would say right now that language is very preliminary. Um so LLC trust, just we were just trying to getting get at the idea that a property is not always your typical, oh, one or two people own it. It can be an LLC business model, trusts, fractional, just the different models.
Yeah, I think I think the idea is looking at. Different types of legal entities that can have multiple individual owners. Um that can be somewhat obscured, I guess.
Okay. Um and then. The other question I have is what what was the total number of permits that are already? Okay.
Yeah.
So outside is ninety-six and the it can go up to two-ten though, right? So let's say it was two-ten and if someone has like a. They get it forever and they're gonna hang on to that forever and ever. Is, have we ever considered like a lottery system or something like that to say?
No, currently, there's no lottery system, no waiting list. Uh property is either eligible by the buffer or or it isn't. So even if, if your property is ineligible, we don't take an application.
Thanks.
Carolyn?
Thank you, Emery. Um I was wondering if you could shine some light on why the units inside of the GID were never. Uh as existing counted towards the overall cap.
So I'm guessing because now maybe Hannah would have more information on this. Properties are smaller and closer together than the GID, and that also is the downtown area, which was, you know, a lot of the tourist activity is. And so I think that was probably the reason why the two hundred and fifty-foot boundary was not included.
Alrighty, thanks.
Okay, um. Hey, I've got a couple of questions. So 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 the application timeline. I mean, the what what you presented was just open. Is that, I mean, so so that's something for us to talk about? As we go through our process when we. Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, I think it would be good to have some direction coming from planning, something commission. So kind of the example I use and that is the common one where someone has to replace windows. You know, maybe, so when someone applies, it becomes a hundred and eighty days. We treat it like a building permit. You have to call in for an inspection with a hundred and eighty days. So let's say you wait five months and then you have your inspection and you fail. And you need to install windows. And so then you take five months is already passed. Now you need to take out a building permit for windows. So you submit the permit, you get it, and that's good for another six months to do the work. Uh you wait five months and you fail your window inspection, but you're gonna, you're gonna fix them. So then you get another hundred and eighty days because it's all attached to that building permit. And so that is a real-life scenario and that is a real-life example. However, you've now taken a short-term rental permit application, which is a privilege, and it is something that other people in the neighborhood may want. And you've stretched that out to could be twelve months. And so the idea is not to like prevent people from. Doing the right thing and getting that window permit. However, it is also an attempt to make it have it be a priority. So they're not, because again, this is a privilege and other people can't have it. So having that hold on that short-term rental permit. And again, this is something, you know, could be a year, it could be eighteen months, it could be six months, but having it specified in code. Ties it to a specific timeline for that person to observe.
What is, what is the number for a a regular building permit?
Uh six to eight weeks. For windows, sometimes windows don't come in too.
No, but I mean, I so so my question is from from like, let's say I put in a permit uh to remodel on my house. How long do I have before I get my CO? That I have to reapply for another building permit or is that?
Well, how how fast are you gonna finish it? So it's maybe six to eight weeks when you, so your permit's issued, you have a hundred and eighty days. If you don't have any inspections, you don't show any progress towards completion, that permit will expire. So if you have an inspection, you get another hundred and eighty days for the date of that inspection.
So that's, okay, hundred and eighty days from. Every time someone coughs or does something.
And that's where when the short-term rental permit is attached to a building permit, it can just, it can keep going. And so having a way to just. Give it a timeline, because then too, if someone in the neighborhood. What's going on with that? And what are they doing? It's just, it's been pending for some time. There's no real stop. When it's attached to a search.
Okay, I get it. Um and then what about the, and maybe I missed it, but the enforcement changing. You know, where code enforcement goes by and they knock on the door, there's a noise noise complaint and. And you get the guests too, you know, they they could care or not care, whatever kind of thing. But so so how does that follow then back to the owner? So that the um, so there's a more, a little more meat to that whole thing.
Uh so the exact language, I think we're gonna need to develop more, but the idea is is that we've had instances where. Uh we had one property where police had showed up multiple times uh and just warnings um or. And the idea is. If that was written, so let's say they did show up and they wrote a ticket and it was for a noise violation, that ticket goes to the guests. Right now, the way this, all this language works and with ticketing, nothing would go back to the owner. There would be no penalties. I'm a short-term rental permit. I had some guests, they got noise violations. All of the penalty is on the guests. It doesn't come back to the owner for any. Penalties.
Okay, so and and. Did I see then from from reading the application or the or the the report? Did it say like two fifty for the first violation, five hundred then seven fifty with some? Accelerated, so 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 the owner must be getting notified each time that happens and. And there's a couple of warnings or there was some.
Yeah, and again, there would, I would say too, we're not looking at changing the fees necessarily or the fines necessarily. It's just more the language to where when something occurs on the property, it's tied back to the owner.
Okay.
And they would, you know, be receiving notification of this has occurred on your property.
Okay, and then uh. Uh my last question and it's kind of been talked, asked about a little bit, but um so let's say you have an LLC. Trust or something and it's a family, there's four people, it's twenty-five, twenty, you know, twenty-five percent each. Do you? Do we say, okay, one person has to be thirty-three percent? I mean, that's what, that's what you're proposing if you had.
Correct.
Make them change their ownership for their language and their. Trust or their LLC, how it's set up.
Correct, yeah. And that's where, so like you saw Crested Butte has theirs at fifteen. And then. We had just thrown out kind of thirty-three as as a place to start. Um again, fifty percent, you could be looking at pair of spouses. You know, ten percent, that's ten people and anything. Figuring out that number, I think, would be a a good point of discussion for planning and zoning commission tonight, or just providing recommendation to council.
Yeah, I think I think the idea is the lower that number is, then the higher likelihood that the ownership is gonna keep kind of cycling through.
Yeah. Yeah.
And and too, that doesn't, you know, preclude a a family from divvying it up among twelve members, but someone would have to then be the primary person. So.
Okay. I don't have any other questions. Uh any more questions from?
Is the, I.
Okay.
Sorry. Is the proposed code amendments in our packet?
Yeah, so the ones where code language has been identified um is in the staff report, uh but then for like ownership models, that. Is gonna require more legal input um to have the exact code language. And again, your input too. I'm hearing, understanding what planning and zoning commission would would recommend. So the idea is, so like for ownership models. Taking recommendations, planning and zoning commission and crafting the exact language for council to consider. Uh but then for the other ones. Um and then I would say the other one's similar. I mean, this is what staff has put forth for the changes. And again, we're looking for input from planning and zoning commission.
Okay.
This has been kind of longstanding practice with planning commission to.
Okay.
Give you guys con- concepts in the packet, sometimes some code language, but not like a drafted ordinance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
You good? Matthew?
So. The uh what's the? Goal or the purpose of having a a natural person hold the permit if it's? The property's in the name of LLC or a trust or whoever.
That's a great question. So let's say you're an LLC and you apply and you're five-five-five Southwest Road LLC. And you list, that's my LLC. And then your uh. Registered agent is one-two-three Main Street LLC. Staff goes to look at it, who owns this property? Who's 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 the exact person owning? And so having that lack of transparency, you could have properties transfer in ownership. If there's not documentation showing who is involved in it. And right now, there's no requirements on the application to show that.
What do we gain?
So yeah, so part of the concern from council was is that you would have outside investor groups. Look for chances to buy single-family housing for purposes of using it as a short-term rental.
Okay.
And so when you have an outside investor group, the purchasing and buying power of that group. Is likely going to be more than your average Garfield County person looking to buy a house. So that's.
But we're still not, and there's no, I don't see anything in here which is limiting or stopping outside interest, outside groups. Who don't live here from buying properties and accumulating numbers of them. So what do we, what do we achieve by having a natural person hold the permit? I mean, I I'm I'm missing, what am I missing?
You could also, and this could be part of the discussion, you could also have other requirements on said natural person.
We could. Are they there?
What would you like?
Well, I mean, it's not a question. I just, I don't, I feel like this is, there's a lot of stuff happening here that is like almost overkill. Is what I'm kind of getting the feel about this. If council wants to cap the number of units. That are available for for short-term rentals, then just do that. Instead of all this other stuff. It just seems like there's a lot of going on here.
To to address the outside investor groups, what what it would prohibit would be. Outside investors coming in and purchasing properties with the short-term rental as something that comes with the conveyance. Because. Once that natural person is no longer involved in the LLC. Then the short-term rental permit would go away. So yes, they could come in and buy a property and apply for a short-term rental permit, just like everybody else. But they cannot just go in and buy up a bunch of existing short-term rental permits.
And and you are correct, like having it at a certain level, even if it was twenty-five percent, okay, well, we have our one natural person that's in charge of it. And then the other seventy-five percent is, you know, just divided up. So it doesn't, I mean, again, that would be looking at what number. Or at all, I mean, if planning is on a commission finds that, doesn't need to be part of it, that's part of the conversation.
You good, Matthew?
Yeah, yeah, for now.
You're done for now?
Yeah, for now, yeah.
Think I will just add one last thing. This is a topic that's been. Discussed at length throughout the years. And so I understand some of the newer commissioners, you haven't been involved in all of the conversations. So there's. A long backstory um that we all are aware of. So my apologies if we didn't include some of that history for you. Um the one thing I did want to point out from, I think this. Short-term rental permit started becoming a permit in uh two thousand and twelve. And the intent behind short-term rental, our license, our permit that we um put out has always been that it's non-transferable. And the main goal behind putting a non-transferable permit. Is that there's turnover and you don't have every property turning into a vacation rental and staying a vacation rental forever. So when it sells. Like Emery was talking about, those permits are constantly changing on that map because properties sell and then some are no longer eligible. And that was really how the program was designed. The intent behind it is so that your entire downtown, let's say, or you could choose. Some other jurisdictions that are really struggling with short-term rental permits. Um that it doesn't end up being that. So it's a mechanism, a limiting mechanism, so that your entire town doesn't s- stay forever. Vacation rental permit and it opens up other opportunities and helps also maintain some of your long-term rental housing stock.
Sure.
Just as a little background on the intent of that particular.
And I get that. I mean, doesn't this sit right now if there's transfer of ownership, the, we already know that the short-term rental permit. Is 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 no more. That's already in code.
I think this is also an effort from staff perspective that we are losing the ability to track.
Okay.
Ownership. And this is a mechanism for us to have um oversight over it when it does happen with those. Uh multiple owner entities, which are harder to look at because it's not just one person.
We could, but what can happen with an LLC owner is I can sell the LLC. And then.
Yeah.
Stat, like the city is, doesn't know that happens.
Right, so the LLC ha- actually has new mo- new ownership, even though the LLC is still in existence. It could have all new people. Fair enough, okay.
And I and I would say too, I I didn't like break down the LLCs and trusts that are currently in that have permits.
Yeah.
Almost all of those are, you know, very familiar with who they are. I know who they are and they are a lot of local people. Um but again, that vehicle, just because that's who they are now. The buying and selling of it without knowing who all is involved, but again, that would come into play. So that's. An aspect of it.
You good, Matthew?
Yeah, yeah.
Carolyn?
Um we do still require that there's a manager or like emergency contact in half an hour proximity to these rentals, right?
Correct, yeah. So every short-term rental permit has to maintain a current responsible party and they have to live within thirty minutes. And the idea is that if there is an emergency, something happens at the house. You know, fire department has to arrive there at one AM, there's someone associated with the permit that is nearby.
How, do you know of any jurisdictions that completely prohibit LLCs or trusts from owning short-term rentals?
Um, I only looked in Colorado. Um, I didn't find any that totally prohibited it. Um, I imagine maybe some, you know, nationwide, a lot of communities deal with this. Um. May, so let's say I looked at like, so Durango, Brecken, Summit County Communities, Steamboat. Winter Park, Frazier, so try to get a breadth of, you know, different communities.
It seems like the intent would be to keep, you know, out-of-town investors from gobbling up our housing stock. But like you said, a lot of the people who have the LLCs and the trusts are actually locals.
Well, well into like the LLC, I mean, it is a a business, you know, short-term rentals, it's a way to separate a person. You know, your personal items from your business, so it is something that I think. Counsel and I think staff recognizes, it is, can be a useful tool, but again, the lack of transparency, I think is a concern.
Taking on less personal risk. My, I had one other question and it's uh, thing away. I might have to come back to that. I didn't write it down.
Um, but to your, to your first question, it, I I think there would be legal issues with prohibiting a corporate entity from owning property. Um, because corporations are people.
I remember my question. Um, in the event that there's an issue at a short-term rental, the guests are, you know, having a party, the. The property owner's like, yeah, it's a party house, you know, come on by. Um, the guests are the ones actually causing the nuisance. So it makes sense that they get ticketed. Would the owner also be ticketed? Like, can you ticket two people for the same offense, one being there and one not?
I think as far as the actual, and some of this is going to be how like police operates. The ticket for like the noise, let's say there's a noise violation, ticket goes to the guests. The language here, though, talks about when there are violations occurring upon the property that the owner is then fined. So. Set, you know, they are separate, but then trying to find a way to, okay, this happened on your property. Maybe this has been a repeated instance, and then there being some sort of, you know, penalty for what's occurring on your property.
Okay, so it's a cumulative tag on the owner. That if he's, if they are renting to sort of poor neighbors, then it'll eventually sort of tally up and and cost them.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
That, the idea is, I think, kind of tethering Title one-twenty, like the criminal provisions of the. Code to O seven L, the land use code, so that. That that information flows from the police department and code enforcement to um, comdev staff.
Yeah, I mean, I've seen it a lot like with trash, you know, people from out of town don't realize that the bears are gonna destroy the trash cans and. It it affects the whole neighborhood, so then both the guest and the property owner would would hear about it.
And and I would add, and I mentioned it before, on the whole, I think. We've had very few instances of in issues. I mean, even if it is a trash, a lot of times it's like. They get the ticket, the owner gets notified, they put something in their booklet to tell people, hey. There's bears. And so fortunately, ha- staff has not had to deal with too many problem properties, but again, having this. In code makes it easier for police, code enforcement, community development to just work together on, you know, neighborhood issues.
But if the owner didn't do a good job of telling the guests about the trash, the owner pays two hundred and fifty dollars.
That's the idea.
Okay. That.
Gives them an incentive to.
Yeah.
Be good houses.
Okay, that's reasonable. Thanks.
Okay, um, and and maybe this might be a little bit out of order, but um. You know, what what I was thinking that that when we go through and and talk about these. After we hear from the public and that sort of thing, I think it'd be good shit was to go through each one separately like we've done. We've done that on a few. Things, because otherwise it'll be just willy-nilly. Trying to go through it and then we can just kind of get, you know, give good feedback. So Emery, you can kind of lead us through that as we have that conversation later.
Maybe treat each bullet as an action item and their additional.
Yep, then we can talk about each one separately and just knock them off. Okay, um, do you have anything else, Emery?
Uh, no, not at this time.
Okay, since you're the applicant as well, um, we'll take comments from the public, if there's any. Anyone from the public that wants to speak. About this issue. Is anyone online? I'm looking at the monitor. I don't see anyone. Are those two, two people there?
Yeah, their hands aren't raised, though.
Oh, their hands aren't raised, okay, they're just listening. Okay, um. Okay, I guess then now we'll 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 bring it back to uh, to the commission. Um, and uh. So I guess what what I'm thinking, like I said, would be good if Emery could come up and let's just kind of go through. Each one of these, and I know, you know, the way you put the um, approval, you know, you recommended for approval, but it's. There's a lot of stuff in here, there's different things, so if you could just kind of walk us through there, Emery.
Sure. Even though I prefer that you all do a motion and then have discussion, that makes it cumbersome with amending the motion, so. Um, I think it'll be. Um, going through this bullet discussion and then. Crafting a motion that encompasses that discussion.
Versus doing it as we go through.
Versus having a motion on the table that then has to be like amended with that discussion's conclusion. Which then gets procedurally more challenging, but it's up to you, Mi- Mr. Chair. Want to solicit a motion.
A motion per discussion point?
Yeah, I mean, could we do a motion per discussion point?
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, that's what, that's what I would like to do. I think we've done that before and it's um, just kind of gets it done, because otherwise. Will be, it'll be a cer- circuitous kind of.
And we can't backtrack after that motion, so I like that.
Okay. We're looking up inside. I'm looking in the mirror. Okay, um. So Emery, why don't you? Start us and then and then and then we'll make a motion then for each.
Alright.
When you present.
Uh, so yeah, so let's start, um, we'll with a dimensional one, uh, buffer size, uh, existing is two fifty. Uh, staff has proposed increase to three hundred. Um, so if.
Okay.
Go from there, what the number is.
A motion in a second where people aren't with that?
Okay.
Commissioner Connerton?
Yep, so I will uh, make a motion to approve. The buffer size of three hundred feet for code text amendments to section zero-seven-zero-point-zero-three-zero-point-zero-three-zero. E seven. I think I went down, yes, accessory. The ATR and STR.
Okay. You good with that, Richard?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Connerton, is there a second? Commissioner Hutton?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Let's have some discussion on this motion then, um.
I I don't, I just don't see the reason to increase the buffer. I I just don't see it. I. We already have caps, the council wants to limit the number of. Units, they should limit, they just just say or ask us to approve a change in the code, the number of limits or number of units available. And put a hard, hard number on it and be done with it. My opinion.
Okay. Commissioner Cipperly?
One of my concerns about increasing the buffer is say someone's, you know, owns a property and. Yes, some of the permits come and go, but they might have been planning for their retirement and they're gonna, you know, turn this into a rental and we might just. Whip that retirement right out from under them due to no fault of their own. It seems as though the existing buffers that we do have. Are pretty solidly filled in, in especially in the downtown district. Uh, it looks like there's a little bit of room in South Glenwood. But with the cap. I'm not quite as concerned. I I am not convinced that it's necessary to have the three under a foot buffer.
Okay. Other comments? Okay, I guess my 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 thought on it is that um. So it 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 drops off five hundred units, right? I mean, that's what.
Five hundred properties.
Five hundred properties.
Be affected.
Could you just put up, just run through real quick? The maps that you had that shows anything that's not green.
Okay, and I will say too, so these are, these are showing two fifty.
Yeah, those are shown at two fifty.
There's, there's West Glenwood. And North Glenwood.
So 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 a lot of that property in North Glenwood to the north is. And you know, it it's not properties anyway, right?
Yeah, I would say too, I mean, you know, these are aerial photos, so. Commercial businesses, you know, with the areas for short-term rental. And downtown.
Pretty much done.
Chair Waller, may I ask a point of clarification? In listening with Commissioner Cipperly's on talking about the buffer, I did want to make it clear. Um, similar to when we implemented buffer regulations in twenty eighteen. Those permits that didn't meet the buffer afterwards were not required to give up their permits. They continue, they can have a contin- uh, continued permit and renew the permit as long as they're. In good standing with all of the other things. It's only at point of sale, so then when that permit goes away, that it would no longer be eligible. So similar to how we did it the first time, everyone that doesn't meet the three hundred buffer, if this were to go into effect. Is basically entering a grandfathered status because they already have a permit, so they wouldn't be in your scenario for the retirement. I just want to make. My point. That you didn't think that someone who had a permit now and then the buffer encompasses them at time of renewal, that they would have to give it up.
I was assuming that they did not yet have a permit. And they were thinking, oh, I'm retiring next year, let's do a short-term rental to, you know.
I see. I just wanted to make sure that that was, that's what.
And just because they used to be in the two fifty, if we pass this, then they're bound to the three hundred.
So not for people who already hold it, but people who.
Right, the people.
Have not considered a permit as of yet.
Right, if they don't sell, I understand that they're grandfathered in and as long as they're in good standing, they get to stay. Okay, thanks for that, though.
Okay, that's good, Em, that's good, Emery. Let's see, any, any other, any other comments on this? Commissioner Callen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Excuse me, um, I'm gonna stick with the two fifty. As well, I just, I just, if we were closer to cap, but we're still well under cap, um, if this is like a, a run scenario. Um, we want to kind of pump the brakes on it, I could see this buffer coming into play, but um, I think we're okay with where it's at currently. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Connerton?
Yeah, so. I mean, I guess with the buffer, the one positive is just really. Future decrease in the ability of short-term rentals, you know, it's because it could potentially, it's like. What we're doing is we're saying that there's five hundred units that won't happen, but I mean. In retrospect, sa- looking at it now and seeing that there's really only ninety-six units of the two-ten. Um. And I don't know how you feel, but I mean, I'm, you guys are talking me out of the original. I don't know if I'm, am I allowed to go back, Richard?
To to vote against your own motion?
Yes.
You can, you can withdraw your own.
Can I withdraw? Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask you, so.
But your second has to agree with you.
Uh, yes, that's a really.
I mean, I mean, we can also just vote on it.
Yeah.
And if it doesn't pass, then.
Yeah, okay, let's do that.
Yeah, don't worry about that.
We'll do that. That's just easier.
Okay, that's easier. Okay, um, any more comments? Okay, let's, let's call for the vote.
Uh, the, if if it's a yes, it goes to three hundred, right?
Yeah, yes, goes to three hundred, no, sticks at two fifty.
Alright, Commissioners, the motion um, to increase the buffer to three hundred feet did not pass. Commissioner Connerton Hutton declared yes, the rest of the Commissioners declared a no. The motion does not pass.
Jose, could you show that vote? Click stop voting, it'll show the outcome on the screen. Thank you.
Commissioner Cipperly, Whaler, Cohen and Sims neglect the motion.
Okay. You good, Hannah, to move on to the next? Okay, Emery.
Yeah, uh, so we'll do permit caps. Um, so again, the suggested change. Would be to count the permits inside the GID. Uh, with the total citywide. That was the.
Okay.
Focus of this proposed change.
Okay, let's hear a motion on that. Commissioner Cipperly?
I move to approve the inclusion of the units within the D I G into the overall permit cap.
G I D. It versus the D I G.
The General Improvement District.
I know, you said the dig.
I got a cough drop in my mouth. So I I I I think that the permits that are within the General Improvement District shall be counted towards the overall citywide cap.
Okay, there's a. A motion by Commissioner Cipperly.
I'll second that motion.
And a second by Commissioner Sims. Okay, any conversation we had on that?
I would, I would only say, I think eighteen percent seems almost a bit high within the GID. That's just. Not based on any, any study or fact, but this is sort of a feeling, seeing the number eighteen percent, um, that'd be my only comment on this.
Could that go into this motion or would that be a different motion to adjust the percentage allowable?
I I think it'd probably fit better with that question because that is a separate bullet point. And the staff had not proposed any changes to the percentages used, um, but it probably fit better in that conversation.
In another conversation?
Correct, yeah, different item, yeah, because this is just purely counted.
Yeah, I think it makes sense to keep these separate since this is adopting staff recommendation is what the motion on the table is.
I do want to talk about that.
Okay, any other? Are you good? Okay, we'll call the. Question here.
Current motion passes unanimously.
Okay. So, so do we want to? And I I don't know if this is a a motion or not, if it's just getting feedback on the eighteen percent. If we want to talk about that or? How do we handle that?
I would say so this, the permit cap alternative is, is an item by itself, and we talked about, like on the screen. With total citywide at five, you know, different percentages of that, and then also the GID. And so staff didn't make any recommendations to alter any of these, um, but that would be, yeah, point of discussion. To make a mo- you know, if if planning is only commission wanted to recommend a different percentage. That'd be part of it.
Okay. Commissioner Hutton?
Uh, I move to recommend reducing the. Uh. Percent of units allowed to be. STRs within the GID. To fifteen percent.
Okay. Commissioner Cipperly?
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a, a motion uh, by John and a second by Carolyn to drop the. GID permit cap to fifteen percent. Okay. Any conversation on that?
I mean, so fifteen is a, is another, it's an arbitrary number, I don't know where the eighteen originally came from. Perhaps staff has some sort of. History on that?
This was a cap, um, that was kind of reverse engineered from the number. Um, that council felt comfortable at the time, which was thirty six.
Okay.
Given the area of the G I D, so eighteen percent was kind of the reverse math. Of the, the number of permits that they thought were appropriate, and that does go up if the units increase in the G I D. So that's why eighteen percent seems a little, um, funny, you know, it's not rounded off.
Sure.
Um, so fifteen percent, if we looked at it, we could, I'm gonna make Emery do the math. A number of units.
Well, I think an example is here, so this is number, the free market units comes from Garfield County Assessor. And that is from two thousand and twenty-three, and just recently, a certificate of occupancy was issued for the Western Hotel. Which has, I believe, eleven units, so that two oh two is now going to be two thirteen.
So it becomes, then it becomes seven units. Right, and I would imagine that my thought would be as if we're gonna have short term rental units. The idea is gonna have them closer to downtown. Where the tourist activity takes place instead of out in our residential areas. Seems to me that if we were gonna do anything, we'd increase the number of permits allowed in the G I D.
Okay, thank you, Matthew. John?
I would just point out that there are residents in the G I Ds, permanent residents, and that. Eighteen percent would be one in five practically, one in five houses could be an S T R. And if. Those buffers, you know. At some point with sales and conveyance, they're gonna stop overlapping and. Spread out to cover the rest of the city that leaves only the G I D where you can get an S T R permit. I would imagine those G I D properties would. I won't, I won't speculate, but. I, I, that's where I see the issue, I guess.
Carolyn?
One of my concerns with having a high percentage of S T Rs in the G I D. Is parking, because there's no parking requirements for any residential units there, and. We know that a lot of people who stay in a vacation rental are gonna show up in a car. And those extra cars right downtown could really affect the people who do live there. And the people who are trying to come into town to shop and run their errands, which is why I, I think fifteen. Would not have a huge impact, but I think it would show our intention of protecting the interests of the citizens.
Okay, any more discussion? Let's call the question. So, so this, so a vote yes is for fifteen percent. In the G I D and the D I G.
The D I G. Downtown and Glenwood.
The motion passes with four to two votes. With Mr. Waller, Chairman Waller agreeing, Hutton agreeing, Silverly and Connerton are in favor. Commissioner Sims and Cohen are against.
Okay. Keep on rolling here, Emery.
Okay, so that was the percent caps. So the next item would be application timelines, and so there are, I think, two things to consider. Is the application timeline or? What that total would be, and then the second thing to consider would be. Um, requiring someone to have the certificate of occupancy before they submit a, a short term rental permit application. So, you know, you would have to build the house first, then submit the short term rental permit application.
Okay, and I, and I'm almost wondering, should we have a little discussion first? Before we make a motion? Do we have to have a motion to have even discuss?
That, that is up to the chair.
I'd say let's have some discussion first, that'll save us that effort of.
Thank you.
Okay. Carolyn?
I don't want to see people sitting on an open permit for years, which I see could happen without a cap on the timeline. And it also makes sense for me to have a certificate of occupancy in hand before the permit can be applied for. To avoid that dragged out process, because these permits are, um, not available to everyone, and you have to grab it at the right time. I would fear that people would sort of gobble them up and then. Oh, I'm gonna fix this one window, and then they come back in after their inspections, as you were sort of describing, and. I could go on for years, and I think that is a, a potential local rental that's not on the market, so I think. Part of our objective is, is to get people in houses, especially locals, and I, I think that moving to six months. Uh, and starting that timeline after the issue and C O would be appropriate.
Okay. John?
Yeah, I would concur, I was also thinking along lines of six months and maybe something like unless such an application has been pursuing good faith. As determined by the Community Development Director. Maybe there needs to be a little bit of wiggle room there for unforeseen circumstances.
Okay. I agree.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Maybe, I guess. I mean, I think you, you spelled this out in the staff report, is there, um? Is it currently front and loaded with inspectors, so if I submit an application? And I want to do this, can I get someone out early to put me on notice that, hey? If you want to see this through to the end successfully, these are things you need to do versus waiting to month five.
Yeah, so we've had people, um, schedule an inspection, uh, they do have to pay for inspector's time, which is ninety-four dollars. And so we've had people do an inspection, maybe they're going to sell their home and they want to be able to show that, hey, I had this inspected. You can have it as a short term rental, meets egress, has all the things. And so we've had people do basically like a pre-inspection before submitting an application or like selling a home, so.
Is it something we could potentially do is require? Within the first thirty days after submission of application to get an inspector in there to. So they can demonstrate good faith when it does come to that six month interval that. Hey, man, you had someone in here. Uh, giving you heads up what could be done.
Would be included in the requirements ahead, because right now it's, we, it's a hundred eighty days. Between when you submit your application and when you schedule that inspection, because we just treat it like a building.
Okay, I guess that'd be my suggestion to consider is, um, you know, something in that vein where, um, we can still be. Pardon is in of other variables that exist. When someone's trying to convert something or attach it to a broader project, um, with still the S T R in mind. Um, that they're being kind of held accountable through that timeline with that intent.
Would they already have a C O?
No, not exactly.
That's, you know, part of it.
Explain that, Emery.
Sure, so let's, uh, I'll think of two examples, it's a vacant lot. I build a house. I submit my building permit to build the house, and I submit a permit for a short term rental. House takes a while, so that short term rental permit, that locks that spot two hundred fifty feet out, they take fourteen months to build the house. So that's, again, someone submitted a permit, it's tied to the building permit, you have a lot of inspections of the house. Maybe a smaller example, uh, I want to do a master bedroom bathroom on my house. Um, I'm also, I also think, oh no, I take that back. That's the example is building a new house, because if you were going to do an addition. You could submit a short term rental permit and they'd inspect the house as is, there's already a house there. Um, but the main thing with the building permit that comes into play is like when people have to do things like windows. Um, or maybe it's something as simple as a handrail on a set of stairs. And having things like that just. Go on.
Right, and tha- that's kind of really kind of more the common sense that I'm trying to appeal to is that latter example of. Yeah, not like I'm gonna go by this ground and do all these things with it, it's more of, hey, can we? Is there, yeah, is there a way to do that without being too cute with just applying common sense, or do we need to just pull it up?
And I, I think just from observing when these have occurred. Uh, it's not so much people not doing an inspection with a hundred and eighty days, it's not finishing, so they'll have an inspection. Maybe they called it like within two weeks, and they needed to replace windows, and then they never do it, and then that permit is just sitting there. I mean, it would, it would, well, sorry, let's say you submit your application, two weeks in, you have an inspection and you fail. You have a hundred and eighty days to remedy that. By pulling like, let's say, building permit for windows, so that person comes in within a hundred eighty days, so there are timelines built in. The idea this more is you need to finish everything, and is it six months, is it nine months, is it a year? And give someone kind of that structured timeline, because otherwise, if it is attached to a building permit. For a set of windows, it can take a while, and that can just be a hold on that permit, so really this is just trying to give it a parameter.
Sure.
You know, so to tell people, hey, like you had that inspection, you did pull this window permit, we haven't heard from you. Your application is going to expire this day. And we, we have it built in with the building permits, but again, short term rental permits, they're not, they're a little bit different, so they should. Really have their own specific timelines, treating them like building permits. It's just not as clear.
Sure. I mean, I guess, just, I guess, question is, what, what's easiest for staff in this scenario? What would be the easiest to apply?
I mean, a- again, either. From application date is really like, the way we word it, that's gonna be the easiest, like, hey, you applied today. March twenty-six, two thousand twenty-four, you have to be done with your whole, because also too. With the process, completing the public notice is part of the process, and sending out letters, had people, they pass a building inspection and they take. Three months to send out the letters, and there's no cutoff date. You know, so being able to relate to people that here is a clear expectation of when you need to have everything finished, and if you don't, your permit expires. It's so clear, deciding the timeline, I think that's. Again, we had six, nine a year.
Yeah, thank you, I appreciate that.
Probably looking for input more on that.
Great.
As far as what the staff recommendation is.
Cool, thank you.
You did?
Yep.
And Carolyn?
Oh, well, I, I think I would fear that there might be like spiteful neighbors and someone calls for a short term rental inspection and they haven't got an egress window. And they've called at like month five and a half. Then their timer would start again if we don't pass this, and then they got another five and a half to not really, you know, you can still call for an inspection, doesn't. You don't have to pass the inspection, right? You just gotta call.
You do have to show progress towards completion, though, you can't just call an inspection and have it be exactly the same as it was last time and no. Work being done.
And, okay, well, that, that makes sense, and then that's sort of defined as to progress.
That's, that's up to the inspectors, and I think kind of going back on Commissioner Collins' point. Um, I wouldn't say, I, I don't see as much concern of like requiring them to schedule the inspection within a cer- certain amount of time. And different things happen, and we're getting house sorted, didn't have time, but the idea is just have that clear expectation of you need to be done with all these things at this date. You know, so maybe you are busy and you take two months in, and then you get your inspection, you pass it, you finish it. Fine, or if you need a building permit, I think just having the clear end date.
Right, and I think that does benefit the, the public is, the pup, the permit's just not sitting there with no rental. Well, thanks.
Emmy, thanks, I think having a clear end date is a great idea. Um, let's say there's something that's catastrophic that could happen, right, because you guys all do construction probably down there. But, um. Then is there some sort of like, uh, way for them to show you? Like, hey, this happened, we want to show you, because you know, they don't want to lose the permit. And, I mean, I'm not saying this is gonna happen in every instance, because you know, in good faith, everybody's, you've put an end, like they're, like, let's say we all agree on nine months or whatever. The time to make a baby, and you get to nine months, but something, you know, like all the windows fall off the truck in the canyon. And the canyon shut down or whatever, so I'm just giving you an idea, but is there a way to at least? Give them that, you know, that window again to say, so they don't lose, I mean, I'd hate to put. You know, if somebody's making all these good efforts, and I, I understand it shouldn't be open forever and ever, so that's preventing other people from getting these permits, but. I don't know, it's just, it's a, it's a. Look at your face, okay?
No, no, what you're getting, no, because what you're getting at is a very, is a very real situation, windows can take a long time to come in, we've had, they've been in back order.
Yeah.
So I think.
It took my neighbor probably a good nine months just to put his windows in.
And, and so, for example, you could, an example of language would be a year, you know, with possible extension. Issued by like, say, the Community Development Director, that does give, it does give staff latitude. To hear like when cases of that occur, um, also, I think just to describe what all goes into the building inspection. Um, so you need smoke detectors, C O detectors, uh, you need to have egress windows. Or just forms of egress, so if you have a walkout basement, again, just ways that people can exit. Handrails, uh, a fire extinguisher, so they're very pretty basic life safety items. Uh, the window is actually really the one that people end up taking a building permit for, a lot of these other ones are, oh, I'll put batteries in my smoke detector. Inspector comes back and checks it, so the window is the most work.
Uh, and I, I guess Hannah and I are writing notes at each other, um. But I, I, I think we could. Put something in there that reflects your concern and allows some administrative relief. Right, like extenuating circumstances, the, the legal term, I think that you're discuss. You're referencing is like force majeure that would be in a contract, um, where it's. Potentially some. Event or occurrence that's outside of your control. Um, you know, we don't. A- and it would be, you know, to the director and the building official who could confer about the individual. Facts of each case, so they'd be like, yeah, this person is not dithering, um, this actually is, is an issue.
And I would say too, like, I, I think having a set time of what that extension would be. You know, if that's again, the same extension, you know, if it was nine months, another nine months. If, okay, maybe it's an extension that's only six, that does keep it consistent.
It's still, still, still putting a time.
Yeah.
Are you good?
Uh, yeah, I mean, so if we all, you know, you give somebody a year to get it done, and then if, yeah, something has six months. And then something happens, and then they get another six in a, an event of some catastrophic event. Based on staff and, you know.
What, what he just said?
Yeah, exactly, thanks.
Was that?
Can you put that in writing?
Twelve and six and six is what you said, or just twelve and six? I, I, I heard two sixes, so.
So six and six, so twelve.
Si- oh, six and six, uh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
The, the primary term. Of the application.
Yeah, and it's just a suggestion, I mean, I don't know how long some of these things take, I've. You know. Pete, you might be able to speak more to that.
Oh, Carolyn?
Usually the, uh, Community Development Director gets to do about a thirty percent leeway, right, and. Extenuating circumstances like the parking reduction, I think, it seems as though. The director gets thirty percent in general, so I think if we were to propose six months, then if you had real troubles, you could go back and get another two. It's, it's like a window, you know? So, that's how, that's what I would feel would be appropriate is.
So do you want to make a motion as a?
Yeah, are you guys ready?
Go.
All right, I move to adjust the application, or just suggest to council that we adjust the application timelines. One, that the permit cannot be applied for until the certificate of occupancy for the primary residence has been issued. And two, that the timeline for completing. The S T R to get its C O would be six months from an application date with a possible extension of up to two additional months with the approval of the. Community Development Director.
Second on that? There doesn't have to be a second, but.
Can I ask something?
Uh, no.
So if there's not a second on that.
Then what?
Then that one goes off the floor.
Some fails for lack of.
Okay. So John, do you have?
So John, do you have?
I would motion, uh. Can I abbreviate this?
Go. He'll tell you no.
Okay. I have motion, we recommend uh, requiring a CEO prior to application for a short term rental permit. And it's deadline or. Uh, time period of six months to complete a short term rental application. With a possible extension of six months at the discretion of the community development director.
Okay. It's a motion by Commissioner Howden.
Uh, I'll second that.
And a second by Commissioner Connerton. Any more conversation on this one? Commissioner, Commissioner Callen.
Uh, I, I like those initial timelines. I just wonder if we also want to not necessarily cap it. So if those extenuating circumstances continue. Um, that that discretionary avenue still exists for. Building to extend that timeline as needed.
So what do you, what do you?
I don't know how we'd wrap that up.
I mean, we'd have to amend the motion.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I recommend amend. I don't know how we.
It, it could be a friendly amendment.
Yeah.
Accepted by the movement.
Yeah.
And a second.
I guess, uh.
Um, or, or we will have to vote on the amendment. All right, the motion that's on the table.
Talk about your friendly amendment.
Friendly amendment, if you would. Um. Yeah, not, not to belabor this. Here we are making glue out of a dead horse, but um, the. And like right, what happened in Baltimore and my windows are on that ship or something. Um. You know, that, that there's something that we can do, that applicant can do to extend that even beyond that second uh, term of six months. Um, so maybe adding some continued deferential language in there to building that um. Maybe an initial six month term and then um. Just, a- and then I guess as needed to address any contingency that may come up between the applicant and. Um, the building department.
At the discretion.
At the discretion of.
I would say just to provide an example, we do have extensions from our building official. Um, and they put a cap on the number of extensions that's in code. So that might be something to consider as opposed to an open ended.
Okay.
As needed, just as an idea that we already have.
Okay, so maybe we can defer to those existing extension caps.
Let me look at them. I know there's a limit, some of them, perhaps whatever you're comfortable saying.
Seems like a year is pretty long.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
You have six months and then you have an extension of another six months. So they have a year.
Mm-hmm.
That hopefully they're working on it.
They could reapply if there's still availability.
So anyway, there, there's a friendly.
So I guess we're just back to the, so I'll just strike.
Okay. Okay. I'd say let's, let's vote.
Six and six people, just so you know.
Six and six.
The motion to extend the applicant's timeline to six months and later six months has passed unanimously.
Okay, Emery, keep rolling, buddy.
Okay. So, uh, now it's the penalties violation section. And I think to summarize what staff is considering here is again, not changing any of the language. About the amounts of the fines, not changing any of the, you know, numbers of how many offenses. Uh, the main focus of this is allowing code enforcement, allowing police to work with community development to have. Penalties for the owners associated with what goes on, on their property. So that's the main focus.
Okay, go hear a motion. And that. Commissioner Sipperly.
So I move to adopt uh, staff's recommendation of application of penalties for violations. To property owners as described in the staff report.
Okay, as a. Okay. Commissioner Callen?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Sipperly and a second by Commissioner Greg. Um, to, to accept the staff's recommendations. Any conversation or? Tell the vote. Oh, wait. Carolyn.
So when we, as, as STRs are already set up and there's violations that happen at a certain property. What currently happens to the property owners?
So again, the ticket, so if it's like a noise violation, it goes to the guests.
Yeah.
There's really no way to tie that to the permit holder.
Um, because I know we had a set, if they got a certain number of violations, their permit could be revoked. But it turns out we're not applying the perm, the, the violations to the owner.
And it's also only certain articles. Also, it's like applies to trash. It doesn't necessarily apply to all. Again, some has to do with police and how their code works.
So some code violations are applied to the owner, but not all?
Correct.
Oh.
It's like noise. We had trouble linking a noise violation to the owner, the way code is written.
And this would rectify that.
Again, this, some of this section too, before going to council for an ordinance is gonna have legal input.
Okay.
Yeah, I think currently the property owner will be cited for, you know, your traditional nuisances, accumulation of trash, lawn weeds.
Mm-hmm.
Stuff like that. The noise, it could, and those. Um, you know, the, those relate to the condition of the property. Um, I think what we're trying to do here is. Have. Some way to track um, where other code violations are occurring. Um, and if the, a property pings a number of times and that is a short term rental. Um, then that will, those violations under these provisions would accumulate on. Um, that person, that property's short term rental permit record.
Honestly, I'm surprised that's not how we set it up in the first place. So I think this is um, a useful.
It is, it is an administrative um, burden, I think. Like, it, it, it's something we'll have to figure out a system. Uh, says for those, those enforcers on both sides to work with each other.
Right, like the police, when they pull up the address has a, this is an SDR. Okay.
And I'd also like to add that the language mentions conviction. So that's not just na- uh, neighbor called. And police showed up. I mean, the police showed up and there's unfounded. That's not a conviction. That's not a ticket. That's not a warning. So it's again, this is. Instances where something has occurred. They've been convicted multiple times in um, addressing that. So.
Does it, a ticket, ticket equal a conviction?
No, no, you have to go to municipal court and, I mean. And a lot of, a lot of tickets like this, you know, they get deferred judgments. And so actually getting a conviction. Um, in municipal court, uh, it does not happen with every charge.
Like the guest would have to get a conviction on a noise complaint in order for this owner to get in trouble, not just pay a two hundred dollar ticket.
If they pay the ticket, that's a, that's a conviction. Or I, I think what we could add is like no contest. Um, which would be pretty much equivalent to uh, conviction or a uh, admission of guilt.
Anything above a warning is basically gonna come back on the one. Excellent, thank you.
And the main point I just wanted to make too is because you can't have neighbors that may call cops at different times. That that's not what this is, is that, oh, the police showed up three times, your permits revoked. It's an established nuisance that has been. You know, written in the ticket.
Okay, Commissioner Callen.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, I guess between that dialogue there, that kinda covered a lot of that ground for me, but I guess it's. It, fair to assume, just given the depth of treatment of this staff report in the background here, that there's been some conversation about the, the practicality of. Implementing this already with the chief and departments and you've got some. Comfort level with moving forward with the, as you said, Richard, it administered a burden that's gonna be fresh for people.
We, staff did have meetings with the chief of police, um, and some of his officers to discuss how. Um, citations are being issued currently and we did talk through some of these things. So there's a general level of comfort there. Um, with making changes to, to match what the intent of the short term rental plan was.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's. So, so let, let's, let's just reiterate what, what we're voting on here. So basically what, what, what we're voting on is that. Going with what the staff has recommended. And if there's a couple little changes, it's like you talked about. I mean, we're good with that. Okay, good. Even Carolyn. Um, okay, let's call the question.
The motion to adapt this stop recommendation passes unanimously.
Amory. Bring us on.
Okay, so the last one, which was probably having the most discussion on maybe, uh, is the ownership models. And I think what to focus on, and so staff has listed some suggestions. And I think, uh, you know, these are starting points for what that recommendation would be to city council. Um, if commission feels. These are necessary. If commission feels there should be additional requirements, I think that's what the um, focus of the conversation would be. And then putting that together, taking that and developing and drafting an ordinance for when council reviews. So, uh. Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Sims.
Would it be acceptable, put forth a motion to have staff come back to us with something a little more specific than what we're looking at here? Instead of having us come up with the. Covered, so to speak.
I think staff has put forward a couple options for you guys to consider that we want some discussion on. Um, but city council is waiting on this item. So I think if you guys, we can obviously discuss those options. And, and then staff will probably further put, based on your input. Um, further background into that to present it to city council with your, with your discussion items that include concerns.
And I would add, like, so for those suggested ones, if you're feeling that there's not enough, you know, specific information or why has this been chosen? What, what, what level? Like, let us know and then that can be addressed in the city council report.
Okay.
And I think that the, in the bullet points really is, is kind of, I mean, those are the recommendations. Um, that then we would put into code. I think as was discussed, the uh, BV. Provisions would require kind of a wholesale reworking of our categories of permits. Um, there'd probably have to be separate caps established for residents versus non-residents. Um, so we're kind of following the crest. Bottom with a higher, um, higher number.
I mean, is, is, is really the only thing that's, that, that we've kind of talked about is the percentage. I mean, everything else is pretty. I mean, there's a natural person. I love that title and there, you know, whatever, the, the various. But I mean, it's all pretty straightforward though, right? Other than that percentage, is that, is that correct?
Well, I would also say too, that I, I view these as starting points for the conversation. Um, I mean, again, the recommendations on it being a natural person. Uh, certain percentage, then being eighteen, and then that person be there or no, yeah, those are straightforward. Um, but if. Have any additional ones that you don't see on the list.
And we want to, we want to have a little discussion like we did on the last one.
Only if you end with me.
Only if you, no, it ends with me.
I'm not gonna break this down.
Okay, let, let's, let's just have a, just a real quick conversation to see if there's where we're at before we do a, a motion. Okay, Carolyn.
Would we be allowed to restrict that the LLC or trust be registered? Like within thirty miles of Glenwood Springs or something? Is that allowable?
I am happy to take a look at it, but I, I have my doubts. You know.
Pretty good.
It, it alien ability, we're just saying, alien ability of property is one of those kind of tenants of property law that.
Hmm.
You know, anybody should be allowed to buy and sell property. And so discriminating on the, those types of bases um, is, is troubling. Um, in the realm of property law. So I, I'll just leave it at that.
Right, so we're, we're trying to do that while not saying we're doing that. Of course, you won't say anything to that. Um, so the idea that there is a natural person is. Somehow supposed to reassure us that there's someone local?
Not necessarily.
Not really.
Not necessarily, I mean, I mean, remember.
It's not a local thing per se. It is a transparency thing that when, if that. Person is no longer involved, regardless of where they live. If that person is no longer involved in the ownership stake of the, of the LLC, then the permit is gone.
Okay.
Knowing that seems interesting to me.
Well, the thirty-three percent really does make it a small partnership where, where we do have an idea of who's involved. And I think that's what the objective is.
Okay.
So I'm sort of, I'm leaning towards thirty-three percent. Sounds, sounds okay. Eighteen or older, of course. Uh, and then if that person who is the permit holder leaves, I mean, this seems, this seems pretty reasonable. So that's part, my part of the conversation.
Okay, there you go. Oh, did you just go up?
Yeah.
Beat me.
Guess I won.
Um, okay. So do we want to try a motion here? Go, girl.
I move to suggest to council that the potential ownership model changes. As shown in the staff report, referring to any property owned by a trust or LLC. Be held to the fact that there's a natural person holding the permit with a controlling interest of no less than thirty-three percent. The person must be eighteen years or older. And if that person removes themselves from the LLC, the permit is void.
Okay. Commissioner Callen?
Uh, second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Sipperly and a second by Commissioner Callen. Um, any discussion? Matthew.
Would vary, would there, would a potential owner or somebody be able to apply for a variance to this? Like say, for instance, there was four, uh, four children who inherited a property. And then they all own twenty-five percent. And then they got, that they have an LLC that would own the property possibly. And, but each, each individual would only own twenty-five percent. I'm just, I'm, that's a scenario, it's, it's, you know.
That's my scenario.
Would they be able to apply for a variance to that?
Um, as currently contemplated, no. Um, you know, variances uh, typically applied to.
Building, the building itself.
Right, not, not to uh, permits and permit procedures. Um, so, yeah, I'd. You know, I think, I'm thinking through how that inheritance would, would work. It, you know, it's. Um. Those are tricky questions. You know, we do have exemptions for inheritance, like. Uh, for. Towns that have like um, real estate transfer taxes that were, that was abolished, but those uh. There's an exemption for, for inherited property, for example. Um, so that's something that could be contemplated. Um, would be applying certain exemptions to this. Um, where, you know, it's kind of out of, out of the now owner's control. Um, that it became this type of situation.
Should I amend the motion to allow for uh, exceptions in the case of family inheritance?
Um. We, we don't have a Brett here, right? We don't have a Brett here, right? No, we don't. Let me let me look up the real estate transfer tax exemptions. Real quick.
While he's looking at that, this was also a comment that came up with city council specifically to prevent. Vacation rentals from being inherited, just as a point of discussion for what you're looking at now.
Well, but they're but but they're really not inheriting it, right? I mean, let's say they want to buy it. And then and then they'd have to change and they go, well, you know, I want Matthew has to hire ownership and I go, well, no, I don't want that because he's going to do something with the other part of the. Trust or anyway, I mean, I think that and who knows what that is, but it gets complicated.
Could somebody assign their particular piece of ownership to another individual for this particular power of attorney?
You should put your.
For a power of attorney or something like that. And it's obviously it's a what-if scenario, but it's just.
I think if there's an if there could be some sort of exception.
Just for inheritance.
Yeah, well, or for whatever, I mean, you know. And maybe it's up to the city attorney or, you know, I don't know how that goes or.
So, Richard, Steamboat Springs, and I was going to bring this up. They have a list in their code of what would be considered. Basically, an acceptable transfer and it had a list of pretty specific conditions. Of how a license could be transferred to like, you know, in case of death, in case of. I think bankruptcy was one of them. I mean, they got very specific, so that could be an aspect of it. Another thing to just kind of talking about as far as ownership and this and family and inheritance. You know, having it set at a certain number doesn't necessarily preclude that. If if a natural person and there's four kids. Someone's gonna have to have thirty-three percent or forty, that doesn't preclude them from doing it. It might not allow them to do it in the way they want, just twenty-five equally. But that's again, this is a permit, it's a license and these are the conditions, so.
Got it.
We could certainly include this discussion and maybe you want to direct staff to further review these items in between now and council. And bring it before them as a topic for their review.
That's what I think.
I I don't think you need an amendment. I think we have adequate direction.
Okay.
From you to kind of put that on council's plate for further discussion.
Do you have something different?
Just to wrap that up, I I could see that. Something would happen with a parent or grandparent living here. The kids have all moved away. The house is now theirs, nobody wants to live here, so they're looking to short term rent that property out, so I.
They'd have to get a new license in.
If they didn't have a license at all before, it was grandma's house.
Okay, so then there it's a new license.
So they're just have to set it up so somebody is thirty-three. Okay, I'm on board.
I mean, I would just go back to what. Why we have the STR licenses in the first place is do we want a house sitting empty that's or not empty, but that's not locally occupied. In. This hypothetical scenario that we're discussing.
You good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, so what I have the motion as is is basically what staffs recommend, right? Okay. Let's call the question.
The motion passes unanimously to agree with staff's recommendation of ownership models.
Is that the last one?
Unless there's a wild card that one of you thinks so.
Oh, is there another one?
Yeah, that's all.
And do we need, yes, okay, yeah, I thought, okay, we're gonna take five minutes, it's five minute long enough. Five minute break, we'll in fact, we'll be back at eight o'clock. The jury. Okay, I'll call P and Z back to order. Okay, next on the agenda, we have. Planning File seventy-four dash twenty-three variances to dimensional setbacks. Jim?
Good evening. Thanks for being here. Thanks for your continued service on the Planning and Zoning Commission. We appreciate it. This evening, this Planning File seventy-four twenty-three. In front of you is a set of three variance requests which are. Concerning minimum setbacks to side and rear lots. The applicant is Todd Leahy, the owner is Integrated Mountain Group. The location. Is a combination of two addresses, three oh eight North Highland Park Drive and sixteen twenty-five Cooper Avenue. Which will become clear in a moment. If you've read your packet, you'll know exactly what I'm talking about. The zoning district is RT Residential Transitional. And the current lot size is eight thousand seven hundred and twelve square feet. There are three action item. Requests in front of you this evening. The first is concerning a rear, the second is concerning a side. And the third is concerning a rear also. In your staff report, it indicates five foot. Right there, that's an error, it should be ten foot as as a minimum standard. And I'll get into the the distances of of minimum requests here in a moment. As you'll notice here from from this slide, staff is recommending denial of the three variances and I'll get into that more in a second. Just to give you some background on the lot itself, you'll see that the the green lot on the the left side there. Is surrounded by a number of of different uses at North Highland Park and Cooper Avenue. There's a church, there's an office building, there's a multifamily complex to the north. And single family residential to the east, Sayre Park to the south. It is not fully surrounded, but it has RM residential medium density. Immediately adjacent to it across the street. And across Grand, it is situated in the RT Residential, as I mentioned, transitional. And as those transition to the north. We we see the context for the multiple uses that are on this. Let me clarify that a little bit for you here. With this application and the variances in front of you, they are connected with a minor subdivision. Which is the intention of the applicant, very similar to the Jervaz property that you saw in the the seven hundred block. Just off here in downtown, where there are existing uses. And there are. Non-conforming setbacks. Parcel B, which is a proposal, everything as you see in the green rectangle here is existing now. There is a residential structure to the north in the proposed parcel B. Which is been in place since the early eighties. The commercial structure to the south. Has been in place since the fifties and has had a multitude of different uses there. I challenge any of you to do research and try to come up with a correct list of chronology. There are a lot. The proposed lot subdivision here. As you can see. With these close structures in proximity to each other is creating two of those. Setback variance or or necessitating necessitating the two variance requirements. The other one, as we'll see here, is off to the west. So to get in in depth a little bit more with the parcels, parcel B to the north. And I've numbered these as such, moving from the north to the south, action item one. Is a four point one seven five minimum request to reduce the the rear setback. Which is ten feet on the west side of parcel B. This is the front, this is sixteen twenty-five Cooper. So this is considered the rear, side and side. This is the front. So action item one is concerning the rear over here, action item two. Is concerning a setback minimum request reduction from five to three point oh seven five oh seven feet. There is a an upper deck in place there, also over here, I apologize, there's an upper deck and then. The single family dwelling unit is. Existing outside of the building envelope. Parcel A, the the proposed portion to the south. Is the holder of action item number three, which is a commercial building which is extending out of the building setback envelope. They are requesting a reduction from ten feet, as this is the rear. To a four point five foot setback. This is the front on North Highland Drive. These are considered sides. By definition, this is a corner lot. And as this lot is at or as this structure is addressed off of North Highland, this is to be considered a side. There is a connected portion of structure between the two buildings, a breezeway, which will be. Removed at some point. With and is not considered a part of of this variance request this evening. As I mentioned earlier, staff. Has has found a recommendation recommendation of denial is fitting for this application. As they only meet six of the seven criteria that are required for approval. It has an exceptional building configuration. The applicant didn't create the lot, they didn't build the buildings. They didn't create the uses of in the structures. It does not harm the general public and it doesn't impact the code goals or policies of the city. It will not will not violate fire and building codes and it is the minimum needed to afford relief here. The the variance item. All three variance items have not met the burden for number five in that there. There has not been an exceptional hardship demonstrated. To that end. We wanted to review hardship with you in terms of the flexibility of relief procedures for a variance. In general terms, a variance is a process put in place to somewhat lessen the impact of a. Of a firm application of the code which would create a scenario that. Prevents use of the land as allowed by code and we have here and I'll and I'll read from this exactly. Where strict application of the code will result in exceptional practical difficulty. Preventing the use of the land is otherwise allowed by the code, also known as a hardship. Reviewing agencies brought nothing back in terms of this proposal, only Public Works wanting to make sure that all easements are shown on the minor subdivision and. No public comment was gained or taken. Oh, and I should also mention, I apologize. The public hearing was. Noticed, it was advertised, the mail out was done, I have affidavits and the the posting was made, so. We have a valid public hearing process in place. The three action items in front of you, again, with the with the correction in action item three of ten feet as the required code. Distance and with the three different request minimums stated there. As you are well aware, the Planning and Zoning Commission may approve, approve with conditions and deny the variance. And you also may continue the hearing at such time where you might be able to determine compliance. at such time where you might be able to determine compliance with the code with more information. There is an alternative motion here. Should you find, after talking with the applicant, that it does, in in your estimation, meet the code, all seven sections, criteria sections? And with that, I can take any questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Okay, questions?
It's a quick question, Jim. Thanks. Can you just go back to explaining the hardship in the code? Just, you know, it said practical use, and this is if you went, can you go back to that slide?
Oh, sure. You bet. Yeah. Now, okay, so in in this case, the applicant
There, that one. Yeah.
In this case, the applicant hasn't met the burden needed for us to recommend approval. Doesn't mean it doesn't exist just within the application.
Right, okay.
It wasn't there.
Thank you.
And I'd also like to add, I skipped right over one thing. It's too light. I knew it. Parcel B, and you're probably wondering about the the sizes of the two lots, five thousand square feet is the minimum in this district. There is an administrative opportunity for us to alternatively approve this lot under five thousand square feet, down to forty-two hundred fifty square feet, should the lot meet eight different criteria. It does, and should the variances be approved, the director is prepared to approve the alternative request. Parcel A is at forty-one hundred fifty-four. It doesn't qualify for the administrative reduction. It has always been commercial for a very long time. And the applicant, anyone in the future would not be able to convert this to a residential use, as staff would not support a variance to that end.
Mission account.
Thank you, Jim. Just look at that finding five. You kind of caveat it with a backend that the proposals, however, consider an improvement on current conditions. Could you just kind of kind of no doubt that for me a little bit, please?
Sure. So the that the current use doesn't meet the strict definition of this variance criteria point. However, what it is that is existing and how the applicant is proposing to clean up this lot and allow for them to move forward under different ownership creates a situation, even though we're we're creating with the minor subdivision, two new encroachments, those those setbacks that are non-conforming. Those setbacks are facing each other. They're not outward. And in general, are making or or setting a scenario for everything that moves forward in the future to then be conforming within within the footprint of what it is that they're asking for.
Great. Thank you. And I want to piggyback on on that number five is, so when I read the staff report, it seems like you say two things are how I'm reading. One, you know, it says that the variance doesn't truly demonstrate the hardship, and there's some more words. And then it then it says the proposal is, however, considered an improvement on the current condition. So it seems like two different things there. What?
Sure, the applicant
Sounds like a good and bad. And I mean, when I read that, so.
I'll take a head on from the director.
So with variance criteria, as you guys know, staff is held to what code stipulates us to review. And the applicant forward, put forward an argument that staff reviewed and the application itself. And and the stipulation of hardship, as Jim has put up on that slide, if you would do one more time, that there is no preventing the use of land as otherwise allowed by code. We could not find the argument that this land without the variance would not be able to continue as it's being used currently. So we were, we are tied in our review of those criteria. It has to meet all seven. If we can't make that argument, then staff cannot propose approval. What Jim included in in the staff report is an acknowledgement with some of the other criteria that this is not harmful, as noted with, I think it's number one of those. It's not harmful to the public, and it's just an acknowledgement that this isn't something that's going to increase. So we are limited by what we can do, and so we included that for your consideration, but we did not find the hardship in this application. Is that clarity for answering that question?
It's kind of a subjective. I mean, it kind of is, but I mean, I I get what you're saying. So so what you're I mean, from all of the ways you could look at it, left, right, up and down, you couldn't define that even though you said it is an improvement on the current conditions. If if we could find that
Right. The criteria that we have to review doesn't talk about the improvement. It talks about, is there hardship? And that's what we couldn't
Which is this with this? Okay.
And yeah, and to piggyback on what Commissioner Waller was saying, just in this staff report also, it said it was no fault of their own. And so, you know, to, and so it that almost would be a perception of a hardship if it was no fault of their own. But, you know, maybe we'll just continue on and see what we can do.
One aspect of the of the seven criteria is that we do have three sections that are connected to hardship, which allow us to be able to differentiate just a little bit. But I I think over over time, we will see these types of of applications creeping up. They're generally not the norm here in town. They're unique, for sure.
Other questions? Let's see if I have any here. Yeah, I have one. So how do cars get into the residence on Cooper?
There is a driveway right here and a garage on Cooper, and then there are five parking spaces here.
Okay, so and then and then how that is staying on this on this slide, the there's no improve, I mean, the the light blues, those are improvements that define the setbacks. Is that?
This is the building envelope.
Right.
And then we
Well, I'm I'm calling them blue, those light blue
These right here.
With the red inside. No, between A and B, the ones between A and B.
You bet. Yeah, those are the areas of of variance right here, the the upper deck on the house and then the commercial building, which extends there.
And then just to kind of reiterate to the to the west is is a parking lot.
Yes.
Church parking lot.
Church parking lot.
And then across the street on Highland is Sayer Park.
Yes.
And then you got some then you have single family around there. Okay. Okay, any other? Yep. John?
Just to be clear, on the south side of the parcel B, I guess the single-family residence, that's a deck that's encroaching?
Yes, right there. That is a deck.
And can that deck be considered a balcony? Which is allowed, what, eighteen inches, I believe, into the setback?
Might be a good question for the applicant, in in terms of identifying what exactly it is.
Okay. Thank you.
Matthew, we don't have ground level pictures of this.
I do not have any readily available.
Maybe the applicant does.
Is there, is there any landscaping between A and B? Is it just all hardscape?
There, there is grass along both sides over here. This is a concrete patio that I understand is to be removed on on parcel A. And then this is, this is all patio along here, all this gray area.
Okay. And then and then per your report, right now, the I mean, the way mail is delivered, there's two different addresses, one for Cooper and one for Highland. Okay.
Quite some time.
Yep, for like hundreds of years.
Did you say that there would be no possibility for changes in use, like the parcel A would have to remain commercial? And were there options for change of use in parcel B? If this subdivision variance is approved?
No opportunity for change of use in parcel A, in parcel B, or suggested change of use on that single-family residential structure. I would defer to the director. No, that's sorry, that's
So this, this is a factor that it would be dropping below another threshold in code for a single-family residential use lot size standard. So this would be a creation with this subdivision that the applicant is creating a substandard lot for another section of code. And so what's what staff included in the section is that we would not be able to support a variance should it want to return to a single-family home in the future because it was actively created as a substandard below what is required.
Would parcel B be allowable for commercial use as as is?
Yes, it can continue as a commercial use. It's only a residential use that has the threshold for lot size standard.
Parcel B is the residential use.
Switch, switch those. The one that is immediately south is the one that would become substandard that has been commercial for the longest period. That is the lot that we're talking about. My apologies. I thought A was listed on the north.
But if parcel B, which is now residential, turns commercial, I mean, is that a possibility? Is that their option in the RT?
That's a possibility in the zone district, yes.
And the size of the lot would not prevent that from happening?
Again, the commercial uses don't have a lot size standard. Converting to commercial doesn't have that same requirement. It's only when you convert to residential, in this case, that it would not meet the threshold for lot size.
So converting it to commercial would make it more compliant?
Not more compliant. It's it's, this is a zone that allows for commercial uses.
Right, but right now, the inner residence, it's not in a legitimate size lot without your reduction in lot size, right?
The north lot is allowable through an administrative adjustment.
Right.
The south lot is below that threshold, so not.
In terms of the proximity of the two on the on the sideways horizontal lot line, would there not be additional restrictions for fire-resistant construction in there? Being five feet from the shared lot line? And would that apply to an existing structure, or only if something were to be built or remodeled? Because those are both within five feet of the lot line?
Fire did review this for their standards and had no comments. Building requires five feet of separation between structures, not necessarily from the lot line.
Oh, okay.
So I believe this would be okay, but we could certainly double check.
I'm sure. I was sure. I heard it was to the lot line because someone else could build right up there, but I could, I might not be right. And the proposal is for the section in green that connects the two buildings to be removed. That's right?
Correct.
And in there, but it could be actually helpful in the case of a fire to separate those two buildings physically. Okay, thank you.
Any more questions for Jim? Okay, would the applicant like to present? State your name and address for the record, please?
Hello, my name is Todd Leahy. I live at, what do I live, ten twenty-eight Blake Avenue here in Glumwood Springs. And I'm representing the ownership group, Integrated Mountain Group. And I appreciate the your guys' service. I know that takes a lot out of your night, so I appreciate that. And thank you to staff for the presentation. We've covered most of it. I'm glad you left this screen up. That's a, I think that one will help me. Just a couple of questions that I heard that I can clarify real quick. Yes, that little small blue section of on parcel B is a deck. And I believe I've turned in the measurement to staff. It's approximately nine feet in the air. So it's a cantilevered out deck. The actual posts of that deck are also measured on your on your guys' plat. And the the actual structure is is five feet. The the posts that hold up that deck is actually five feet from the from the setback line, the proposed setback line. So the cantilever, again, is about nine feet up in the air and does cantilever out into that setback area. But the actual structure that holds it up does, actually does not. So hopefully that helps. That's on your on your plat. Yes, that green section. So back in just a quick little history, and I won't bore you with it, but Dr. Stewart is who built this property. He was the local dentist back in the sixties. So that was his dentist office on parcel A. When he moved to town, he built that back house in the eighties, and the code required him to connect the two as it does today, amazingly enough, which surprised we didn't change that back in the day. But anyway, it still, it still exists where you have to connect these two buildings. So he was, since he was his own dentist, and that was his front, the front house, no big deal. I'll connect it. I'll walk underneath this covered walkway and and I'll go to my dentist's office and work. So you know, that was in the sixties or in the eighties when he built the house. So sixty-five years later, I end up with the property, me and our group, because it hasn't changed hands since at least nineteen sixty-three. So we're the first person to kind of somewhat inherit this issue now. When we bought it, it sat on the market for a while, and its biggest problem was it is is actually is its biggest hardship. So we're we're kind of going to discuss number five, because number five is our hotspot. It sounds like we agree on eighty-six percent of this application and fourteen percent lands on number five. But but number five is actually the biggest hardship that this property has. And that is a single-family residence attached to a commercial hair salon slash dentist slash office slash whatever you want to call it from all the years that this thing, this front building has been used commercially. So when you, when we looked at this property, we we got it because I I personally like dealing with challenging properties, and this is a very challenging property. And it's because of the attachment of residential commercial. Creates all kinds of problems for people wanting to afford this. Somebody may want a residential house downtown, but they really don't want a salon. They don't want to rent a salon. They don't want to own a salon. They don't want to manage a salon. And vice versa. Someone may want the salon. They don't want the house. So we've got this, you know, we've got a an issue with with that going on. There's issues with 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 financing. I I know financial is not supposed to be one of the hardships, so I get that, but but it's, it exists. When you have commercial and residential attached to each other, it creates a big problem out there in the in the world of moving, selling real estate. So I guess I get, well, let me go to my notes here, because I don't want to forget too much. We we started this whole process with with the idea of, okay, we want to, we want to get rid of this hardship of these two properties being attached to each other. So what would be the goal of that? It'd be to create the best two lot subdivision, if you will, that we can without perpetuating any of the problems that this particular scenario creates. So our goal was to completely detach the single-family house from the commercial building, so that they're no longer attached to each other. The way your code reads, the best way to do that is with just a one lot subdivision, a two lot subdivision, one line down the middle. We take the, we take the the covered porch or the covered awning roofline that connects the two off of the building. And we get as close as we can to the setbacks that are necessary, because the buildings are where they are. You know, we we obviously didn't build those buildings. They've been there for quite some time. So, you know, and create a line down the middle where each person would have their own fee simple lot. The fee simple owner of the commercial building could could live under your RT code, residential transitional code. They could live under that code. The single-family house would live under that code. We wouldn't have a party wall agreement. We wouldn't have a condo agreement. We wouldn't have a townhouse agreement. Because all those options are also available to us to to come in and just say, look, we're going to do a zero lot line. And we're going to party wall this thing down the middle, and we'll have two two uses, you know, but but then we've got to create that agreement, which which I'm not a big fan of doing. I would rather each person have their own fee simple lot. And and we just figured that was the best way to see this property move forward in the future, eliminate as many problems as we can, and let the city govern the two lots with their with their zone districts. So that was, that was originally why we started down this path. Now, without these variances, that situation, that best Now, without these variances, that situation, that best case si- situation of splitting these two. Doesn't happen, cause we're gonna go back to something attached. We're gonna go back to some type of a, a zero lot line. Still gonna split it, but we're gonna end up with a condo plat, townhouse plat, some type of duplex plat. Where we've got these attached probably still, we probably leave the attachment, cause I think you'd have to then by code. And, and that, to me, that's just not ideal, cause now they're not only gonna be living under RT um zoning and under the RT code. They're gonna be living by whatever we come up with on a, on a party wall uh, agreement down that lot line. So again, the, the best way to do this, and the only way to do it is to get these variances. So without the variances. I mean, if you want to talk about a hardship of approving a variance, without the variance. The code is not going to do what it, what I think it should and what I think it needs to do. Um, it just won't, we'll be back to square one of, of splitting it in a, in a manner that's not ideal. So let me just kind of read here a few um. So I guess on number five, I mean, cause again, I know that's our main thing. Um, I mean, I truly believe this variance request does demonstrate an exceptional hardship. So the, the, the best way, I think for the city moving forward, the best way for this property to move forward. I think it creates, the, the biggest property or the biggest hardship it creates is for the property itself. And just what this attachment to residential commercial does to it. For anybody who gets involved with it moving forward in the future. It, it's much, much more ideal for this property to live and breathe on its own, each one of them with their own lots and not attached to each other. I think this would allow for the highest and best use of the property. It would allow for the best type of ownership for the property. Again, without these variances, these hardships are gonna continue. They're gonna be. You know, you're, you're not gonna have these, these highest and best uses of this property. Again, it would allow the, the RT to, to govern both lots without us adding. More regulation to that by some type of a party wall agreement down the middle. I guess that's my, that's kind of my, my discussion is without these three variances. This property still really remains in a non-ideal situation. And it'd be nice to see it clean itself up and have two separate fee symbol lots, which would just make. It'd make the property live much better in the future. I don't know if I heard any other questions that you guys had asked, that I had comments about. Oh, the shrubbery. So almost down the property line in the middle, the proposed property line between uh, A and B. There are a bunch of shrubs that are about eight feet tall, where the easement is proposed, where the light blue is. Um, on the other side are some trees. Um, so that's, you know, there's just some shrubbery there. And there is some fencing that's not needed in any variances, but there are some fencing that create a little courtyard for parcel B. Um, so that's what's between the buildings. So once the, once the um, roof is removed, that dark green. Um, you'll have a little bit of fencing and some shrubbery in between the two buildings. Very typical of other buildings around town that would have fences and shrubs between them. I think that's all I have.
Okay, um, thank you, Todd. Would, would, why don't you hang there? We'll.
Yeah.
We'll see what questions we have for you. Okay, Carolyn?
I was hoping we could see some photographs of all different sides of the site.
Don't have photographs. I kind of figured everybody would go look at it, but maybe not.
Not allowed.
And if we did, we would never say it.
Yeah, I don't know where that is.
We could pull it up on Google Maps and do it.
Yeah, you could definitely do that.
I mean, I've only looked at the front of it. I never even realized there was a house back there.
Sorry, I didn't realize.
Not allowed.
Unless we do it as a group and then it's public notice.
And you're not allowed to talk.
Right.
Yeah, no, it's to.
We would have had to been out there before this meeting in the snow.
This, this will give you, because it's a corner lot, you're gonna, you'll get a really good idea of what we're, what we're looking at here. If we can get down on the ground, it's. I can even move us around once we're down on the ground there if you want. Can we get the little guy down there?
My guy's in the top right.
Okay, so there's Sayar Park. And this is the little dentist building that was built in the sixties. Um, this fence is actually already moved back to the proposed property line. So one way or another, we wanted to move that back, so we went ahead and did it. Just so that it was um, back behind the, the entrance door, which is there on the left. So you, so that's the little dentist office.
So the fence is not, not on the property line?
Um, this particular fence was just kind of in the middle of wherever for, for these guys' reasons. We've actually moved it back to the proposed property line already. It, it actually works, but either way, we were gonna do that, so we just did it. So we would be prepared and it was already there. So there's the Lutheran church next to it. Over here is insurance company, title company. I think Basin and Morris might be over in here. Um, and then obviously Grand Avenue down here. So there's lot. Is that lot A?
Parcel A.
Parcel A. So, oh, the one question you guys asked. So this, this will be able to be used commercially if they ever wanted to use it residentially. Because of the smaller than five thousand square foot lot size right now, they'd have to come back in and ask for a variance to do so.
No.
They could ask for a variance if they wanted to, but it would need to remain commercial because of the size of the lot. I think you guys did clear that up. Yeah, unless you guys change your lot sizes here in the next few weeks. Did I say that? So here's the side of the commercial building going down Cooper. And you can see that little fence right there that I'm, one of my. We've already lowered that to four feet, so that's no, that was originally going to be a variance and that's no longer needed. So we've lowered that fence down. It kind of creates a little courtyard. There's what's in between, that's between the commercial building, the back of the commercial building. And you can see all the shrubbery in the middle of there. And so that lot line literally would go right, almost down the middle of, between the back of the building and the, and that fence. Is that, if I can get right, right there or not? Yeah, well, there you go. You can see that a little better now. So you can see the amount of room we have in between these. Which is why I think the fire department was happy. We were actually getting rid of the attachment, which I think they were actually pleased with the fact that the attachment would be gone. So now they've got some separation of the building. So I, I think that's why they were happy about that. And then the driveway, two car garage. It's actually a really big garage. It's usable, so people do park their cars on there. Um, so we got a two car garage for parking there. And then I believe there was, in, in your staff report is that ten foot easement that was supposed to have been put in place back in the eighties when this house was built. And it's even on the plat. I have the building department plans for when this was built. And um, there was a ten foot easement there, so if it isn't there now, we'll put it there. And I think that was one of the stipulations of this application, that if we do approve this, that we would put that. Um, actually put that easement in place. I believe I saw that in the staff report. Am I correct on that?
It was from Public Works, I think.
It should be right now, this drainage right. So there.
They got nineteen and a half over there.
The previous subdivisions uh, required a, a drainage easement that. Uh, moved along this property line. And it is part of uh. A building permit. It was uh, a requirement that the easement be recorded along this side.
Okay.
And, and that never happened, so that would just need to.
Okay. Part of that reminder, just so you know, that's fine. You know, since we're looking at it from this angle. Um, again, I don't know exactly what happened in nineteen eighty, cause I only, I've got the building permit, but it's stamped by the city. And this um, setback on the west side that I'm now asking for a variance for was approved by the city. It was approved at five feet and my guess is, cause this still at the county is three oh eight North Highland Park Drive, the whole address at the county. So he developed it with, with Highland Park Drive being the front yard and the house being. The, the west side of the house being a side yard setback, which is why they put it at five feet. I mean, Gamble had it at four point seven nine percent. My guess is that might be the siding. The sheeting and the siding and his foundation is at five feet. So, so that one's already kind of been through some city scrutiny, if you will. Although this proposal eventually, after we get through the setback issue, this would become a rear yard, so. But it, but it actually was designed to be built five feet off of that line as a side yard setback to the, to Highland Park.
I see that it's built to four point seven eight feet off of the lot line and you're saying there's supposed to be a ten foot drainage easement there? Underneath the developments that are you requesting the variance for?
The drainage uh, and utility easement in question. Although uh, Matt Langhorst, the Public Works couldn't find the requirement that uh, stipulated it as part of the building permit. Hannah both did research on this, that he suggested that it be put in place because of the natural lay of the land. And how it would drain most likely in the event of a, a storm.
Matt Langhorst was suggesting a ten foot drainage easement along the west?
Five foot.
Five, okay, so we're almost up to five here. Okay.
And there is a drainage easement across here at the, there, there's a big ditch on the north side of this property.
It is within the easement.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, again, our, our, really, our biggest hardship with this whole thing is this attachment issue. Between the commercial and the residential. It just, it just creates so many different issues that are not good for either parcel to, to coexist with. So that's our, that's our biggest problem.
Other questions or? Okay, I've got, I got a couple of questions. Um, so, so it's been a long time, long time happening. So who, who is there now? Is it, is it um?
They're, they're actually both.
You have, you have commercial and then you have residential, so there's, I mean, there is one owner, which is now you guys.
Yeah.
But how, how, how long has it been separated that way where people rented out different?
I think an awful long time, cause doctors, um, I'm sorry, Dr. Stewart. Well, moved to town in the eighties, so that would have prob- and he, he's who we bought it from. He was still living in, he had just passed away this summer.
But he went practicing dentistry here and.
No, but he's been renting this first little building out commercially.
So he was still living in the back. He was living in the residence.
Yes, and we bought it this August. He had just passed away. We bought it from his heirs. So residential, commercial, it's been like that. I'm assuming since nineteen eighty when he moved in here. How long he ran his dentist office, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
But it, but this, from what I can tell, that front building has never been residential. There was no indication of anything in there that showed residential use.
Um, could, could you guys remove any of the hardships between, between the, between A and B? I mean, you know, I mean, I'm, I'm seeing there's some, you know, when I look at that, that, you know, there's no pictures, but I look at this on page five. Maybe Jim, you could pull that up again, the proposed site layout with variances. Yeah, that one right there. I mean, so you're, you're removing the, the breeze way or whatever that thing is called. But then what about the, the light blue things? I mean, could those, could those go away as well? And then you, I mean, does that give you more space to make that variance go away?
I was kind of hoping we would get to that. I, I just hadn't really, it just hadn't kicked in, you know, and we, I was kind of looking at the, the report and everything. And I literally just looked at that before I came in. I was like, and your, your question about the eighteen inches, I think is perfect. So if we could remove that back to where it met code, cause the structure of that deck, the, the light blue there that, that hangs over. There's enough room to back that, I think it's three feet that comes over. There would be enough room to take that back to halfway, like an eighteen inch spot. Where it hung over eighteen inches met code and the structure is only, the structure, I believe, is three posts. Three or four posts that hold that desk, that, that uh, deck up. So we could definitely back that deck up um, to that, to where it overhung eighteen inches at a nine foot height. And that would, that would generally, I mean, I think that would get the, the necessity of having that variance gone.
But it's, so, so that's a deck on, on parcel A, which is a commercial building, so after you get your teeth pulled, you go out there and.
Parcel A doesn't have a deck, but it's on parcel B.
What's, what, what's?
Oh, oh, so that, so the light blue is part of the.
Is part, part of the upper deck of parcel B. That's part of an upper deck that, that has the can of levers out.
This is all parcel A's building.
Well, yeah, I mean, I mean, yeah, I'm talking about parcel A.
So the little light blue on parcel A is just, that's where the existing building is, so that's where the existing setback would be.
No, so that's kind of confusing there, okay. So that's not, so really that should all be, anyway.
This is the.
You, you, you have the. Yeah.
Yeah, so that little building is only as wide as that light blue area. That's the building.
Okay, so that's the building.
So this will be the setback.
So you'd have to do that to what John was talking about was that. I mean, if you did the, the balcony or the deck, does that?
So I did go back and check code. There, it's still an encroachment into beyond the eighteen inches by a half foot. So technically still requires a variance.
Or chop the edge of the deck.
It could be.
If you, if you moved it further back, that's a possibility. If, if, if Todd wanted to look at um, removing part of it. But right now, you can encroach eighteen inches into the five foot side yard, which would get you a three and a half foot setback. What this is, is three feet, so we're still a half foot away from where it needs to be. Hence the variance.
I guess, I mean, I would be willing to move that deck back and it's.
That's a discussion you guys.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, I mean, would, could that be something just goes, you just go like that, it's gone? I mean, I don't know. I've got a hatchet cheese.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, if, that could be, if you wanted to make that a stipulation, I would have the, you know, ability to agree to that tonight, that we would do that. And that would be fine as far as a condition of, of approval.
I, I think it would actually, more appropriately would be withdrawing the application for variance number one. And, you know, and then. Comm dev and, you know, reviewing the subdivision. I think that would be uh, a condition of that approval or would have to occur before the plat uh, will be. That makes sense, Hannah?
We'd still have other variances.
Right, that's what I was saying. You'd, you'd be, you'd be withdrawing the application just for the first variant, just for whichever number it is for the.
Well, but does that hit two of the buildings? That hits two of them, doesn't it?
No.
Only one.
Action two.
Only that one goes away, which is action two.
There's only one balcony, so that, that can encroach eighteen inches. It's only one variance that would be removed if the applicant decided to basically remove the encroachment into the variance. So it doesn't solve the others.
Yeah.
Which, which the others are the, the, the side. Use, use your little mouse, Mousy, and show me. No, I know, yeah.
So, so this one on the west side of B is action item one. That, that's the existing dwelling unit and, and an upper deck portion that goes back here. This one is an upper deck or uh, on, on the south side, action item two. And then action item three is, is the commercial building on the north side of parcel A.
So, so I, I guess my question is, so it's number two, so if, if, if you remove the balcony. And then could you adjust the line so that you're? You know, I'm not doing the math here myself, but.
There's not enough room in between the two buildings to accommodate a lot line that.
Even if you floated it up?
It's gotta be fifteen feet.
Yeah.
It's gotta be fifteen feet. Yeah, and then otherwise, then you get into the structure, so. Yeah, and then otherwise, then you get into the structure, so. Without then you get into the structure, okay.
Shooted about six feet. Don't tell me it can't be done.
Jogged the lot line, you you still wouldn't.
So, okay, so that's so that doesn't change that.
So Hannah and I were just discussing, and it's it's it sounds like it's action item two that could be withdrawn. Is that, okay? So and then and then we would confirm at plat approval.
That it's been re.
That it's been removed.
Really only shortened six inches.
To to be in conformance of the code.
That'd be that'd be great.
And then and then and then the same question goes on the. What is that? Number one? Which is to the which is to the west? Jim? Can those be?
There's a deck in in that one, but there's also part of the single family dwelling unit that I doubt.
Maybe it's a bathroom.
There's a house there.
That's the deck and that's, yeah, it's kind of confusing.
I don't think I can move that.
No, you can't move that.
In between, yes.
So, I mean, so so from small construction, I'd say it sounds like number two is the only one that could maybe be addressed.
I think, yes, correct.
Yeah, okay. Okay, let's see. The you know, the other question I have, Todd, and you know, I kind of get it. I mean, nor- normally when when we see the seven variance criteria, there's like four or five of them that's that's not met. So I mean, we're down to one and 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 and. Well, no, I'm talking about number five is the only criteria. So so is my, I guess my question is, is I'm assuming that you had heartfelt conversations with staff on on your heart versus their heart or?
Well, in order to, I guess, in order for, at least in my mind, to do this right, would would be to have, again, each one have fee simple ownership. So that's the path we went down. I didn't ask them to go down any other path. I didn't ask them about, you know, should we do a a zero lot line and a and a party wall on a on an exterior roof? I don't know if that's ever been done, but it's odd, it's.
Well, I'm just talking about the hardship. I'm talking about the hardship definition for, you know, your 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 criteria, there was the the S seven criteria.
Let's put it this way, your number five is the most subjective, toughest one to meet. Because when you're talking about real estate, I don't care where you're talking about it. Finance has always come in. I mean, it's always something to do with that. I mean, and one of the biggest hardships this thing creates being attached is somebody being able to go live in this house and get a loan to live in it, which most of us need to do.
Yeah, I guess the thing is is.
Into your bank.
Yeah, and I'm I'm just reading it, though, as as Hannah and Jim stated, that it's not related to purposes of convenience or financial burden. I mean, I get what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah. And so it's hard to argue those things, but but this one really truly without these variances. It's going to end up with a subdivision of that's not, to me, ideal for the property moving forward. And this this could have a long history. We just put quite a bit of money into both of these places doing a, you know, just doing a cosmetic remodel. They were they were both pretty much unlivable when we got them. The doctor was in his nineties and the house was in pretty poor repair, and so was the front. So we've got them back to a point almost where they're gonna they're gonna live in this town for a long time now. And it'd be nice to fix this little situation. Be nice to fix it.
Well, thank you. Any any more questions? Hey, Todd, thanks. Thank you very much. Okay.
When do you need, did I already give you a head nod on we would pull number two? Do you need anything more than that from me?
I think you'd say that on the record, that.
Yeah.
You're willing to pull the second variance.
Yeah, if it's be willing to pull the second variance and work with staff to make sure that we meet that five foot setback on the south side of lot B.
Yeah, that's that's in the record. I think that it withdrawn.
Thanks, Todd. Okay, do we have any people from the public here to speak for it or against it? I don't see any, do we see any hands raised? I don't know, I'm looking for the, no, there's a raised hand. I don't see any raised. I don't see it colored. Okay, that'll close public comment. So I guess then comes back to to the commission. Amy?
For motion?
Yep.
Can we do them one at a time?
You have to.
Okay. For action item number one, variance request to allow a decreased minimum rear yard setback. In the staff report at sixteen twenty five Cooper Avenue. By code section zero seven zero point zero two zero point zero eight zero. My motion is to approve the variance request with the suggested findings.
You have to make up your.
I'm going to. With number one, two, three, four already stated. But with number five, the variance request does demonstrate exceptional hearts hardship, not related to purposes of convenience or financial burden due to the fact that they didn't create this. It would be very costly and the lot in order for them to use it in a practical manner. And that's it. Oh, and it's number seven or six and seven.
Okay. There are a second?
I I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by by Amy to approve variance number one, and she stated the the hardship for number five and a and a second by Matthew. Okay, does have any discussion? Yeah, one thing, one thing you mentioned, Amy, was cost in your in in your words.
I did, and also.
So cost can't be one of the words, right? Because it's a financial.
Well.
Thing.
I was saying practical. As well.
Okay.
And it's not, and I also stated that it wasn't a hardship that they created.
Can we get that mic on?
Sorry. And I stated that it wasn't a hardship that they created, it was a hardship that they inherited.
That's number three.
So, yeah.
So you're saying three and five are the same?
I'm saying it's pretty close.
Pretty close.
And, you know, I it's similar to another variance that we just did last month. I I don't know if I can use a comparative analysis, however, the comparative analysis is very similar. And that these were properties that were established in the sixties. And, you know, I also would like to say that, you know, without the fire marshal thought that the buildings actually connected. It's a really unusual circumstance to have that connected. And that creates an undue hardship, because now they have to, it's like, you know, cutting off one of their arms and they're being told they, you know, they have to cut it off or something.
Because it's been like that forty years.
Yeah, so so those those are, that's my logic.
Other comments? Carolyn?
I'm not convinced that there's exceptional hardship not related to convenience or financial burden. So I'm not sure I'm behind the motion. I wish that we maybe had some more flexibility, but I, there's no way to interpret the request so that it meets criteria five, in my opinion.
Commissioner Callan?
Thank you. I guess, looking at the the motion, I think kind of the context there and a little bit of some previous conversation regarding just kind of restraint on alienation, the ability to really make the best use of these two parcels and freeing them up for some fee simple transaction. Best use of those two parcels. I think that's generally what you're aiming for. I'm not sure how to articulate that. But I think that's my understanding of kind of the. The thrust of it. So I'm not sure if you, if anything I said helps rephrase anything.
Richard's sliding toward the.
I mean, I I don't think the findings need to be rephrased. I think that all the discussion going into the record kind of supporting bolstering the findings is kind of sufficient and and clarifying the intent.
Okay. Yeah, and I think what you said bolsters my intent of the motion. Thank you.
Love the comments. Yeah, and I, so I'll I'll kind of throw my two bits, and I mean, I get it too. I mean, I, you know, it sure is a lot easier. I mean, and he's been there for I guess, I don't know, let's say sixty years or whatever. I mean, a long, long time, maybe more. But it's been that way, that hard that hardship, whatever, has kind of been there all along. So now it's like it's like a redevelop, it's a redevelopment kind of thing on hardship. Saying that, so anyway, that's where I'm kind of struggling a little bit with that, so. Okay, any other comments? Okay, let's call the question.
The motion passes for the two with Commissioner Sims, Hutton, Cohen, and Connerton in agreement. Serpily and Waller neglected.
Okay, action two, we took that off the table for the conversation, right?
Yes, for the for the record, the applicant withdrew action number two, which will be addressed if if we get to staff review of a subdivision plat, then the encroachment would be addressed at that time.
Okay. Okay, ready for a motion here? Amy's queued up here.
For action three, again, for the variance request, this time it's at three oh eight North Highland. For a minimum rear yard setback of four point five feet on existing commercial use. So this was parcel A, again, required by code zero seven zero point zero two zero point zero eight zero. I also suggest we approve that motion with the suggested findings, or not, excuse me, not the suggested findings, but with one, two, three, four. With the what the staff said and with five, that it does demonstrate hardship not related to purposes of convenience and financial burden due to the fact that they didn't create this, that it is a sixty year old problem that they're unable to use the property in maybe what we intend now per code. And that creates an undue hardship for them to rectify that. And then number six, the variance will not violate building or fire code requirements. And number seven, the variance is minimum variance that will afford relief of the subject standards of code.
No, second.
Okay, we have a motion by Amy to approve the variance, variance number three, and a second by Commissioner Cowan. Okay, conversation.
There have been a number of occasions where I remember issuing rear yard setback variances. And since we have already approved variance, action item A, I think I can be on board with action item number three, although. I still think it's a financial convenience. But I'm interested in seeing the lots cleared up as the applicant has described. And so I think I can I can agree with this.
Anyone else? Let's call a question.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Yep, thank you, Todd. Yep, all the best. Okay. I thought this was going to be a short meeting. Someone said, who said seven thirty? We should have put some beer on that. Okay, now we're Commissioner comments. John, why don't you, why don't you go? Nope, yep, that would help, wouldn't it?
I just remind everyone we have an election this month, and should get out and, well, or don't get out and vote. Yeah, sorry, and not don't vote, the get out part.
Just get out. Okay, thank you, Amy.
Woo, that was great work. I just want to say thanks again to the staff, because I know that the code amendment was a heavy lift, but it also, speaking to something Richard said, and it really does, like we were actually doing some planning tonight, which was, you know, it's like such a good exercise for all of us. And I'm really glad that we had the discussions we had, and it's nice, we all, you know, we agree to disagree sometimes. But, you know, it's it's good to get some work done. So thanks to everybody.
Thank you. Carolyn?
I've had people asking me about a certain project going on along Midland Avenue, and I think it's electrical improvements. There was a crane there for a while, right in right down below Target and Petco. It's along the side of Midland on the west side. There's a a lot of dirt piled up, dirt running down the road. I don't see any erosion control, and I don't, I don't remember for CNN, like, a, I don't remember seeing that here. So would that have been a sense and locations?
Uh, yeah, that is a, if I'm understanding where you're talking about, that's right along Midland.
Right on the shoulder, yeah.
That's a lift station, so that is a city project. That did not require, it didn't meet thresholds for, sorry, didn't meet thresholds for arriving at above staff decision.
Do the thresholds involve area of ground disturbance? Because there's a lot of ground.
No, they do not.
And is not the city required to do like erosion mitigation?
We do follow engineering standards.
Okay, so the city's not exempt on its own projects from water quality?
Not at all.
Good, okay. Well, maybe I'll take some pictures and send them in. Thank you.
Send them to Matt.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I will.
Okay, anything else?
You get to, we we get to call Matt now if the trash guy doesn't come on Thursdays. And they they don't come all the time, so you know. And they, they don't come all the time, so you know. Yeah.
Mine's been awesome.
Mine has been about fifty percent success rate.
All right, that's all.
I just, I wanted to thank staff for all the work they put in today, tonight. I appreciate it. Thanks. Oh, and one last thing is uh the stuff that we're, if uh that proposal ends up. Uh passing, I would assume there's going to be some changes to. Process and procedure.
We will review that after the outcome of the election.
Fair enough. Uh, yeah, just may- maybe uh I found it helpful when I came in. Last year that we had the, just kind of how to communicate um the do's and don'ts and. You know, what ex parte means and and all of that. And I think. It's particularly relevant, given just kind of the the tone and tenor. Of our community right now and um maybe to revisit. Those do's and don'ts and perhaps maybe. As appropriate uh to develop guidelines or protocols for this commission, some, some handrails for us. Anyway.
Yeah. I'm happy to work with Hannah on scheduling that and um I think we'd want to make sure we have alternates in attendance for that as well.
Then, yeah, thank you, staff, I could that, and thank you all for the big conversation.
Yeah, and I, I was just gonna echo that. That was one of the items I had. I know we talked with Hannah, Joy and I did, and. I think it'd be interesting to have a couple of work sessions. I don't know. Kind of getting together, going through some of those things, but I think it helps us as a group. Working together as well, so good luck trying to find a time for our schedules, but everything, but still, I think it would be. I think it'd be good. I mean, tonight was, was a good. Thing, but I think it'd be good to help us going forward. Doing some of that.
Be like the airport board and do seven AM.
Even if there is breakfast.
And I'm, I'll throw, I'll throw one out, because I, I spend a lot of time up at Sunlight is. And it, it looks like there's a, there's a sewer line or something going on to the city sewer line that the Burzne Ranch that Gould is. Doing, which creates a whole lot of hubbub in the city with. We're at an exit, so and 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 I don't really care about that, but I'm just. I was just kind of curious. What is that? Because I know when I drive up there, I know the sewer lines in the road.
I actually saw that on my way to sunlight as well. And I will relay your question to Matt Langhorst, our Public Works Director, for an answer.
Yeah, okay.
We got no business to email there.
No, well, no, we run sewer all the way up there, all the way to um Spring Ridge. So, okay. Okay, now to Ms. Hannah.
Thank you, everyone, for your discussion tonight. Um I just have a little bit. City Council has actually requested. A joint work session with you all in relation to the zoning reform item um that you previously reviewed and recommended. Approval to city council. They are. Continuing that application and it's scheduled, parts of it are scheduled to come back in May before them. But before that happens, they would like to have a joint work session with you. To hear about your assessment um for further discussion. So I will be working with. You and council to get that on the books on one of their meeting nights. Zoning reform, yes. Then city bonus, lotsized standards. Zoning reform. Um, so I'll, I'll work with you guys to try and get that on. So it's before May sixteenth of when they are taking up some of these new items, but they did request. They want to, they want to chat with you about it because you had a very long discussion and they know that Planning and Zoning Commission. Gets into all the weedy areas, um so they would like some additional perspective. Um I will also mention, we are still looking for alternates for Planning and Zoning Commission. We currently do not have any applications for that, so. Put the word out and we are, we are seeking qualified. Or interested bodies. Worth this lovely board. And that is all, that is all I have for you. Um we do have applications for April meeting, so that will come out later. Thank you.
Okay, we'll call this during this meeting.
Thanks for dinner.
There you go.